Well, good evening. Whoa, that was really loud. And welcome to the Thursday, September 5th, Executive Session and Briefing Workshop of the Leander City Council. The time is 6:02. And at this time, I can confirm, we do have a quorum, so we can do business. Now, we're going to convene into executive session pursuant to Section 551071 Texas Government Code and Section 1.05 Texas Disciplinary Rules of Professional Conduct to consult with legal counsel regarding, one, HBA Residential Care Group LLC versus City of Leander, HUD Case Number 06-19-5454-8, and a proposed conciliation offer; and, two, the prior city manager's employment agreement and strategy litigation and resolution of cause number D-1-GN-19-004678 Kent Cagle versus the City of Leander in the 200th Judicial District Court, Travis County, Texas. We are in executive session. Hello, the time is 6:58, and the council is going to reconvene into open session to take action as determined appropriate in the city council's discretion regarding, one, HBA Residential Care Group LLC versus City of Leander, HUD Case Number 06-195454-8, and a proposed conciliation offer; and, two, the prior city manager's employment agreement and strategy litigation and resolution of cause number D1GN19004678 Kent Cagle versus the City of Leander in the 200th Judicial District Court, Travis County, Texas. Pro Tem, do you have a motion?
For item number one, we do have a motion. We're going to take no action.
All right.
And then, number two, we're wanting to go back into executive session.
Reconvene.
We're going to reconvene about item number two.
All right, all in favor? All right. Okay. All right, at this time, we are going to adjourn our work session. The time is 7 o'clock.
It's right here on number nine, which is the public comment period.
We're going into executive right away.
Oh, you're going to agree, so you want to say you're reordering and you're going back into executive session pursuant to...
But we're going to go ahead and do the roll call and all that, right?
Yes, we can go here, and before you do the recognitions, you can say we're rearranging the schedule and removing item... Item 36 up to now, and then go back and say we're going to convene into executive session. You're only going to list this one, okay?
Okay. Well, hello again. The time is 7:01, and welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Leander City Council. At this time, we're going to do our invocation. If you'd remain standing for the pledge, I think Brian is here. Brian is from Life Church. Thank you.
God, we thank you for the City of Leander, for all the growth it's experienced over the past 10 years, especially recently. We know with that growth comes a lot of work, a lot of change, and that's the business before us tonight. We lift up our mayor, lift up our council to you for an awareness of the true needs of our city, for wisdom in making the right decisions, and for the ability to work together. We know that where there's change, there's friction, and so we pray for a spirit of cooperation. Lord, we thank you for these council members. We know they donate their time and their talents to the city. I pray they'll sense a sense of satisfaction for the work that they do in our city. So tonight, we lift up our agenda to you and those who participate. We ask that all decisions that are made will benefit our city and bring honor to you in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right, Ms. Crabtree, if you could do a roll call.
Councilmember Catherine Battalion Parker.
Here.
Councilmember Michelle Stevenson.
Here.
Councilmember Jason Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Christine Settequest.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Chris Sernick.
Here.
Councilmember Marcy Kenny.
Here.
Mayor Troy Hill.
Here. We do have a quorum. We can do business. At this time, we're going to move item 36 up, so we're going to reconvene into executive session regarding employment agreement and strategy litigation and resolution of cause number D-1-GN-19004678 Kent Cagle versus the City of Leander in the 200th Judicial District Court, Travis County, Texas. We are now in executive session. All right, the time is 7:48. At this time, we're going to reconvene into open session to take action as determined appropriate in the city council's discretion regarding, one, HBA Residential Care Group LLC versus City of Leander, HUD Case Number 06-19-5454-8, and a proposed conciliation offer; and, two, the prior... Let's go ahead, Kent. Do you have a motion on that one?
Yeah, on number one, we're going to authorize... We're making a motion to authorize legal counsel to make the conciliation offer discussed in executive session.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor? All right, passes unanimously. And, two, the prior city manager's employment agreement and resolution of cause number D-1-GN-19-004678 Kent Cagle versus the City of Leander in the 200th Judicial District Court, Travis County, Texas. Pro Tem?
Yeah, we're going to make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a settlement agreement in the form approved by legal counsel as discussed in executive session.
I'll second. All right, all in favor? All opposed? Did I see your hand go up?
Oh, yes.
Okay, passes unanimously. All right. So the time is 7:48. We are going to reconvene into open session, where we will move to item seven, recognitions, proclamations, and visitors. I think we have a proclamation.
Okay, we have a proclamation by the City of Leander. Whereas the Capital Area Council of Governments, CAPCOG, is a political subdivision of the state serving Bastrop, Blanco, Burnett, Caldwell, Fayette, Hayes, Lee, Lano, Travis, and Williamson Counties; and whereas CAPCOG is committed to supporting a strong framework for the sharing of critical resources among CAPCOG jurisdictions in responding to natural or man-made emergencies; and whereas National Preparedness Month creates an opportunity for the residents and businesses in the CAPCOG region to prepare their homes, establishments, and communities for any type of emergency, including natural disasters and potential terror attacks; and whereas investing in the preparedness of ourselves, our families, businesses, and communities can reduce fatalities and economic devastation throughout our nation; and whereas emergency preparedness is the responsibility of every citizen in the CAPCOG 10-county region, and all citizens are encouraged to make preparedness a priority; and whereas the City of Leander, along with other regional, state, and national partners, support the WarnCentralTexas.org campaign to increase public readiness in preparing for emergencies and educating citizens on how to take action; and whereas preparedness is an ongoing effort of all citizens in the CAPCOG region, including youth, older adults, and people with access to functional needs; and whereas the City of Leander encourages all citizens to participate in preparedness activities and are asked to review preparedness information, such as those on the website Ready.gov, and to sign up to receive emergency alerts on the WarnCentralTexas.org website to become more prepared. Therefore, be it resolved, Mayor Troy Hill do hereby declare September 2019 as National Preparedness Month, and encourages all citizens and businesses to develop their own emergency preparedness plan. Go to WarnCentralTexas.org to register to receive emergency alerts, and work as a team toward that end.
Thank you.
With that, we will give it to our fire chief.
All right, we're going to move to item eight, staff reports. Mr. Pierce?
Yes, sir. Our August 19th, August 2019, single-family permit report, we issued 132 permits this August compared to 152 last year. That is down about 13%. However, year-to-date, we are still up 7.43%. In our ETJ, we, again, had a little lag there in permits, but for the year, in the ETJ, which is our extraterritorial jurisdiction, our change is plus 68.66%. Single family.
Great.
Is that all? That's all for me.
Okay, awesome.
Engineering's next, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that.
Maybe I should add, I'm sorry. I'm still a rookie. I'm still a rookie here, you're not going to...
All right, Mr. Watts.
All right, well, we have... The engineering department is currently reviewing 30-plus public improvement construction plan sets. That's typically subdivisions with their water, sewer, streets, and drainage that are dedicated to the city upon their acceptance for maintenance in perpetuity. We have 65-plus public improvement plan sets under construction at this time. And those are basically... There's a couple of our capital projects included in that, but most of those are subdivision We have 20-plus site development plan sets under review, and we have 35-plus site development projects under construction. And we've got eight capital projects that are also under construction. I might note that the Baghdad North roadway improvements are substantially complete, as is the Brushy Streetscape Improvement Project. East Street is in design, and we've submitted a conditional letter of map revision for drainage improvements to FEMA for their review and approval. Kaufman Elevator Storage Tank is substantially complete. Metro Drive Extension is under construction. Rightaway is under design, and we're in the acquisition process for additional rightaway for that project. And San Gabriel Parkway Phase 1 is under construction, and Phase 2A and 2B are in design. And then, the Brushy Creek East wastewater treatment plant, which is part of the regional treatment system that we're members of, that plant is... Those expansion... That expansion project is under design, and we expect it to be 90% complete in the next several weeks. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Mark? Mr. Temmets?
Good evening, mayor, council. Got a really few events we want to share with you tonight. Coming up in the next month, our fall baseball season kicks off on September 7th. We have over 430 young people out at Benbrook Ranch Park taking place in fall baseball. Come out and watch some great ball if you've got the moment to do that. September 7th also is Movie in the Park. We're featuring Dumbo, which will bring out a lot of young families, for sure, and that's at Bloodsow Park. September 8th, LPAC is holding their second Sunday Art Fun Day at Leander Public Library. Their... This week is... Or that week is painted stone art, so come out and paint a bunch of stones and enjoy. September 11th, Active Adult Trip. They're going to Austin Fire Department for the 911 memorial and tribute, which I think is just incredible. I hear a lot of great things about it, so I'm excited. They're getting to go. I wish I was, and I may try to sneak in and go with them anyway, but I think that's going to be excellent. September 25th, they're also following up with a trip to Waco, the Mammoth National Monument. So I don't... I think both those trips are completely full, but you might want to check with the park office to make sure. And then, the big one coming up, October 4th and 5th, Bluegrass Festival. Three bands per night, kids' zone, fun and drinks... Food and drinks, excuse me. Bring a lawn chair. More info will be released next week about the bands, but, gosh, we've got a spectacular lineup. And so, if you enjoy Americana music, bluegrass, some western swing, come on out, because it's a lot of fun. We get about 2,500 people there, and everybody just has a great time relaxing and enjoying themselves, so... And then, one new thing we've got coming up on October 5th and 6th, a fall classic baseball tournament. This is for our older boys, majors and juniors division. We have a lot of outside teams coming in. First time we've done a tournament like this on our own, so we're expecting a great weekend on October 5th and 6th. So that's the end of my report. Any questions? Thank you all.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate that. At this time, we're going to go to public comments. I do have some people lined up to speak. If you would, when your name is called, give your name and address. You have three minutes. Stephanie Burku.
My address is 2500 Champions Corner Drive, Leander, Texas. And I'm here because the last couple of meetings, I haven't been available, and I am concerned about the fact that the rental space is no longer available at the Leander Public Library, and that there have been several actions taken that I feel like have been removing free speech and freedom of speech. According to the American Library Association, "A library is a collection of resources in a variety of formats with the mission of educating and informing or entertaining a variety of audiences." Literacy is very important in my family. It's something that we've done together. I have an autistic child who oftentimes has a hard time articulating what he's feeling and what his struggles are, and he's growing a lot, and he's getting much better at articulating that. As we've been reading books with autistic main characters, most of them have been very flat, one-dimensional characters that really stick to stereotypes and don't do a good job showing you what it's like. We have found books that do a great job of representing him, and it has opened up the dialogue for me to be able to ask questions and get a window into his world. And by allowing the rental space, and by allowing programs that maybe you might not want to attend, but somebody else might, you open up the world to build connections within our community and builds a safety net. It helps kids to feel safe. It helps them to have a place to go without having to look at things like suicide, which I know is really high in our young, middle-grade kids these days. And so, I really wish you guys would reconsider some of your policies with the library and look at making sure that we're being inclusive and open of everyone. And if people don't like it and don't want to go, they can choose to stay home. There's nothing that mandates them to show up. There are kids out there that are looking for characters that represent them, that give them a way to feel connected and close in our community. I have watched one of my children struggle with depression and suicidal ideation, and it is horrendous as a parent to have to do that. And with something as simple as seeing adults that are like you, that understand what you've gone through, that can help give a window to what's going on and help explain it and give you somewhere to feel safe, can reduce and prevent other parents from doing it, would absolutely be amazing. And again, if people don't like it, nobody is being forced to go and attend programs they don't want to see. So that was... Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ellen DeKanga. I live at 1126 Iron Horse, Leander. I have been a resident for almost 20 years. I'm a Girl Scout leader, and I'm a teacher in our community. I'm also addressing the concerns regarding the library. A single story is a dangerous thing. When people are portrayed as a single story, we're excluding others. For example, Chimanda Nagazi Adachi talks about meeting her college roommate when she moved from Nigeria to the U.S. Miss Adachi is the daughter of a professor. She grew up in Nigeria in a typical middle-class household. Her roommate wondered where she learned to speak English so well. English is the native language and the official language of Nigeria. Her roommate wanted to listen to her official tribal music and was disappointed when Miss Adachi brought out her Mariah Carey tape. When media portrays a group of people as a single story, the individual disappears. We have seen how media portrays blacks as thugs, cops as murderers, Mexicanos as criminals. This is not an accurate representation of any of these populations. When people are talking about Leander, Texas, they are getting a single story. The media coverage has been focused on how the City of Leander blocked the LGBTQ community from access and representation at the library. Leander is labeled as queerphobic. I have been a resident of Leander for almost 20 years and never would have associated this community with the word queerphobic. I have always associated our city with the word community. Community in not that we live in the same place, but in the sense that we share common attitudes, interests, and goals, that we are in fellowship together. It is not the media's fault that our story has become one of hate and prejudice. It is our own fault. We fail to anticipate the needs of a diverse community. We fail to have clear expectations in place for decision-making. We fail to have community input and presence in guiding the story of our community. Miss Adachi cautions us. "The single story creates stereotypes, and the problem with stereotypes is not that they are untrue, but they are incomplete." We need to move forward as a community, recognizing our diversity and amplifying it through our actions. Every action we take, from city council to individuals, must focus on and celebrate the vibrant community we live in, our common attitudes, our common interests, our common goals. Kate Tempest Bradford states, "All narrative has the power to impact culture and individuals in a positive way or a negative one. It's up to creators to choose. What will we choose for our community? What will we choose for Leander?" Thank you.
Selena Granders?
My name is Salika Granderson. I'm at 1501 Howard Lane, Austin, Texas. I wanted to speak about the restrictions that are... I'm sorry. I wanted to speak about the restrictions that are holding some of the companies back from moving into Leander, as far as the signage for the businesses. So, of course, you know that Leander's growing. It restricts the marketing for companies, the growth that they could experience from expanding customers. It's growing really fast, but however, it skipped over the interior Cedar Park. The biggest shop, it is on the outskirts of the city, Lakeline Mall area, 1431, the edge of Round Rock, Cedar Park Center and Ice Sports, north of Cedar Park. No real development central or west of Leander, based on the fact that there are so many restrictions dealing with the signage. Thank you.
Amy Dark?
I'm Amy Dark. I live at 203 Ran Road here in Leander. I'm here today to ask that this council revisit the decision to cease public room rentals at the Leander Public Library. I think of all the programs that could be held there, meetings, classes, workshops, and I mourn for these lost opportunities in our city. I also mourn for our city's reputation. Anyone who's paying attention knows how we got here, and it's not about the overcrowding of our Parks and Rec programs. It's not about the costs of security. It's not about the small space of our library. If we're going to grow and thrive, we cannot cling to outdated ideas. We cannot practice discrimination. We cannot be known for the things our city is now known for. Lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, questioning, queer, intersex, asexual, and allied individuals live here, vote here, and spend money here. No matter how you spin it, it is very clear what the motivations are for our city leaders regarding the library controversies. It is clear to everyone in this room. It is clear to library staff. It is clear to library patrons. It is clear to voters, and sadly, it is clear to our children, who are recently barred from seeing a beloved author because her very identity is offensive to your sensibilities. And this is unacceptable. I'm asking you to revisit some recent decisions. Please reopen the common rooms at the library for rental. Please permit the library director and her staff to determine library programming. I understand our library director has a master's of library sciences. Please let her do her job. Our Parks and Rec director, on the other hand, who is currently policing the library, studied physical education and recreation and has absolutely no place in determining what our library should and should not do. Right this wrong. If you truly want to serve our city, then help repair the damage you caused to our reputation. Let the Leander Public Library serve the residents of Leander, even if you personally choose to harbor prejudices against the people you purport to represent. We can address that problem in the next election cycle. I stand proudly with the Leander Public Library and the LGBTQIA people of our city. Thank you for your time.
Tegan Rettzer?
I live at 2105 Emerald Isle Drive, Leander, Texas. It is difficult for me to get up here and speak, but I'm here to voice my opposition to ceasing the programming, the public rental rooms at the Leander Public Library. About a year ago, I held up a sign in this room during a city council meeting, trying to alert people to some inappropriate goings-on in our city government elections. Friends of Mayor Hill took my image and photoshopped it. They created fake images of me holding signs that said things like, "I'm a dumpster fire", "Troy makes me horny", "I was once a guy", and 22 other incredibly inappropriate things, some so much worse I cannot say them here. These images were posted on the website of a local hate group on Facebook. Mayor Troy Hill and two members of this council participated in voting for their favorite sign. I don't think I have to tell anyone up here how appalling that is, or how much it discourages people from showing up and engaging with this governmenting body, or how hard it makes it for me personally to keep showing up. But I do. I show up. I've cried, and sometimes I shake as I prepare my words, but I keep coming back to do my civic duty and speak on behalf of what I believe is right. Today, I'm here to support our public library. The motivations for ceasing room rentals is clear, and it has nothing to do with space or with money. It has everything to do with censorship and bullying. I will not be censored. I will not be bullied, and I stand with those who are. I stand with the Leander Public Library and with the LGBT community in our city. I ask you to reopen up the library for public rental and return control of the library programming to the library. Thank you for your time.
Jessica Cooper?
My name is Jessica Cooper. I live at 605 Clear Spring Lane, Leander. I am also here to speak on behalf of the library. I have lived here in Leander for almost 12 years now. I have been teaching in this district for... This will be my 12th year. I have not felt as unwelcome in this city as I have over the past few months, and been concerned about how that makes other people feel, how that makes my students feel. As a sponsor of the student-led GSA at our school, I have witnessed firsthand the maturity and self-awareness that kids have about themselves and the world around them. They're some of the bravest kids that I know. They're coming up with their own plans for discussion, supporting each other, and it's honestly the only time and place that I see some of these kids smiling and happy. They feel included, they feel safe, and they feel worthy. They see reflections of themselves and others, and they know that they are not alone. They hurt nobody by having a place that affirms their identity, and providing children with times and places where they feel this way is not only right, it is our responsibility to make sure that it happens. Nicole Martins, an associate professor of media at Indiana University, says, "There is this body of research and a term known as symbolic annihilation, which is the idea that if you don't see people like you in the media you consume, you must somehow be unimportant." By attempting to prevent the reading and presence of LGBTQ voices and images at our public library, you are attempting to remove an entire group of people from the public sphere. There is no logical rationale for this other than personal ideology. There is no doubt to support that being exposed to that is harmful. There is...
Becker Beck.
Thanks, Deb.
Okay. Thank you.
I would like to talk about increasing trust in the city government. Currently, the city of Leander publishes major documents like the proposed tax rate and budget and comprehensive plans, well before the scheduled decision date. This is important because it allows the citizens reasonable time to read and study the information. If they have clarification questions, they can contact council members. The time is important for building trust and a sense of transparency. While the publication of the proposed library policy changes met the letter of the law, that is to publish at least 72 hours before the meeting, it did not give sufficient time for the public to read and study the proposed changes. Many people told me this damaged their trust in the city. It certainly damaged my trust. I have a request. I am requesting the city council to write guidelines for which documents need to be presented to the public at least two weeks before the decision date. I would be happy to work with the council to write such a document. Thank you. Oh, I didn't tell you where I was from. I'm at 1609 Lyons Den here in Leander.
Anna Nguyen.
My name is Anna Nguyen. I live at 7603 Cattle Cove, Austin, Texas. You may be wondering why a person from Austin is here in Leander, planning to talk about the Leander Public Library and representation. It's the same reason that a Houston-based fundamentalist group called Mass Resistance were here in Leander to protest the Drag Week Sorry Hour back in June. We both come here because what happens in Leander affects not just Leander. It affects Austin. Maybe it affects Houston. You may have heard of Spencer Deering and Tristan Perry. They were two gay men, just holding hands in Austin, and they were beaten to within an inch of their life, just for holding hands. The assailants are products of the Georgetown ISD. They are associated with a virulently homophobic church in Georgetown. What goes on in Georgetown affects not just Georgetown, it affects Austin, and it will affect Leander. That's why I am here. Now that it's clear why I am here and why I have a right to be here, let me actually talk about representation as it relates to the Leander Public Library. If you Google "a public library's mission," the first thing you will see is that it is to empower individuals with free access to information and the universe of ideas. It's imperative that all generations have not only free access to informations, all information, but also the entire universe of ideas. It's imperative that all people, all ideas, all experiences are represented equally, not just white people and their ideas and their experiences, not just heterosexual people and their ideas and their experiences, not just cisgender people and their idea and their experiences. All people, all ideas, all experiences are valid. We need representation of all people, all ideas, all experiences at the Leander Public Library. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Howell. You didn't have to follow her.
Thank you, thank you. Kathy Howell, Pickle Mason House. And what I'm here to speak about this evening is, and I've mentioned this previously, the Cub Scout Pack Number 160, which meets over here at the Leander Methodist Church, which I didn't realize this, I knew they'd been here a long time, but they've been here over 40 years. They are going to be having a flag retirement ceremony on September 15th at 1:00 PM at Veterans Park. I'm not sure exactly where it's going to be. The Parks and Rec Department, thank you, Mark, has agreed to have a fire pit out there so that we can have the full ceremony, and I'm very excited about this. And everyone that can, please come. These are the young folks. These are the Cub Scouts, not the Boy Scouts, so these are the young ones. And this is a pretty involved ceremony. It's very intense, and it is absolutely awesome. Today, I did a few things researching our flag, and I found out this interesting thing. We did not have any rules or regulations about our flag, about the United States' flag, until actually 1942. In 1924, however, there was the National Flag Conference, and on June 14th, 1923, they convened, and it was, the main characters involved with this was the Army, the Navy, and 66 other patriotic groups. And what I was reading didn't say exactly what it was, but I'm assuming organizations such as Daughters of the American Revolution, the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, organizations such as that. And they came out and they wrote what has essentially become our flag code for the United States. But it took Congress 20 years, actually 18 years, to agree upon it and make it a law. In the interim, every single state in the United States had their conferences and they wrote their laws. The Texas law was written in 1933, so our law actually predates that of the United States. And in that code, it's very interesting. It talks about how we should fly the flag. It talks about that the United States' flag is a living entity because it represents us, and we are a living entity, and it's very important for that. So the retirement ceremony is very important. The retirement ceremony, however, has always been reserved to those scouts. So that's part of the reason why I believe that the scouts were involved originally in all this, because they're the ones that do the official retirement, and they have the official ceremony. And again, the date is September 15th at 1:00 PM at Leander's Veterans Park. Thank you.
Karen Thompson.
Karen Thompson, Chairman of the Leander Historical Preservation Commission. Across from the Pickle Mason House, Thompson's on Brushy Creek. About 15 or 20 of those flags will be ones that I'm contributing because the children of the Republic of Texas and others have given us. We used to probably erroneously burn them at our place, but we were annexed, and you can't have any kind of fire like that. But I appreciate Mark very much, and I defend Mark from other comments that were made about him that are not true. Okay. 1938, this is before World War II. This scouting was a big deal in Leander, and this is the Girl Scout troop at... They went to the park in Round Rock and spent a week. I do have most of the names. I know that Emma Jean Champion, who is still alive and well and kicking, she's in there. My mother-in-law is on the back row, in the middle, in the back, but she did pass away several years ago, Frances Mason Thompson. But the girls spent a week at Round Rock in the park. There were two parks that they mainly camped in, and a really big one there near where Trinity College used to be. So that was their picture in 1938. Here's the 38 and 39, Frances Mason, her certificate of membership, and of course, it has that thing that says "Leander," the troop name. It is a Girl Scout troop number one. Yes, it was troop number one. There was only one Girl Scout troop in Leander in 1938 and 39, and those were her, in 1938, were her badges that she won, earned, earned, sorry, thank you, very much earned. I became a Girl Scout in Austin. My mother was a Girl Scout leader, and my daughter Kathy, I was a Girl Scout leader. She was a Girl Scout when we were in Jolleville. And I have three generations of Girl Scout handbooks and manuals, one that my mother used extensively. This was 1955 in Austin, and worked very hard to do the Girl Scout things. I loved being a Girl Scout. The Girl Scouts met, camped, two weeks in the summer each thing, and depending on how many cookies you sold, how much your parents had to pay for your camp. Where is that camp, Kathy, on the other side? Tex Lake, thank you. Other side of the lake. So my parents took me, and you had your first week, and then the parents came on that Sunday to visit, and I packed all my stuff up, and I said I was going back to town, that there was just too much, too many bugs, too much work, too much everything. And my mother said, "I paid for this," and my father said, "Yes, we paid for this, and you're staying." So they made me stay, but ironically, the second week was wonderful, and I had a great time. But yeah, I was ready to go after that first week. Anyway, Kathy did a whole lot better at Tex Lake than... And I did a couple of more tours at Tex Lake, but loved taking the girls, too, but I didn't... My ideas of camping was hiltin' in, but I got better at it once I got a horse. So anyway, I'm sorry. I regress. I will tell you, the whole idea is for us to learn the history of Leander. I still have time. What are you trying to cut me off?
No, it's broken.
52 seconds. No, I'm not done. You had the scouts, you had the Boy Scouts, you had the Girl Scouts, because the community was tending to all of the different facets that you should have, church, school, organizations. Remember, I did baseball not long ago, because we still have great baseball. I got 30 seconds. But no, baseball was so important, all of the sports, all of these activities in Leander, and that built the community that it was. It's not all of these things that people say. It's still that way. We're not perfect. No, we're not perfect, but we're good, really good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. At this time, we're going to move to our consent agenda. This is, these are action items. Items 11, 13, and 14 have been pulled.
I'll make a motion to approve. Your second.
To clarify, you are excluding the disjoining in front of consent, intended separately, 11, 13, and 14.
Yeah. They will be considered on the regular agenda.
Yes.
So we have a motion at second. All in favor? This is unanimously. All right. Now, we're going to move to item 11. This is to authorize the interim city manager to provide notice to Hilltop Securities, formerly First Southwest Company of the city's intention to terminate its municipal advisor agreement dated July 3rd, 2014, and further authorize the interim city manager to negotiate and execute a new agreement with RBC Capital Markets LLC as the city's municipal advisor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm here to answer any questions, or I can go through the proposal, however you wish.
I, excuse me, I had a question.
Yes, ma'am.
On, I can't, if I put these on, I can't see you.
It's probably better.
Okay. Exhibit B, the questions I had in here were for development services and the fee schedule, and it, correct me if I'm wrong, it states in here 2% of any of the bonds or debt issued in regards to general obligation, certificates of obligation, tax notes, that RBC Capital would get 2% of that, and can you please clarify?
Absolutely. That's a very good question. That section was, is verbatim from the agreement we currently have in place with Hilltop Securities, so that's where this language came from. And that language was added back in 2014 when the city went through its first PID process. And as all the participants in that process can attest, including staff, city attorney, bond counsel, RFA, when you're looking at a development-driven debt issuance, there's a lot more due diligence required on all the parties, and so that's why this was added to account for those non-traditional debt issuances that are related to private development. Now, as you and I spoke briefly, I think your points are well-taken, that it's, could be construed to include those other more traditional municipal financing options. What's before you tonight is a draft, so we can certainly hone that section to make it clear, because it was 100% driven by our experience with the first PID that we did, and that was, and the only time that this fee structure has been applied is when the other two PIDs were, Deerbrook and Crystal Springs were worked on. So we certainly can make that language more precise.
That would be great, because that, council, that was my concern when I saw the 2%. I thought, like on our last large CO of 15 million, that's a lot of money, 2%. And so I wanted to make sure that we weren't setting ourselves up for something inadvertently. So thank you very much for fixing that.
You're welcome.
So I'll make a...
So we certainly can make that language more precise.
That would be great, because that was my concern when I saw the 2%. I thought like on our last large CO of 15 million, that's a lot of money, 2%. And so I wanted to make sure that we weren't setting ourselves up for something inadvertently. So thank you very much for fixing that.
You're welcome.
So I'll make, what is, since this is the draft, do you need me to make a motion for you to resubmit a final?
The request, if approved, would allow the city manager to give notice to our current municipal advisor, Hilltop Securities, that we want to exercise our option to terminate in 30 days and then allow the city manager to execute a new agreement with RBC Capital Markets. So it would not necessarily, that agreement would not necessarily come back to the city council unless you desired it to, but it would be substantially in the form as presented, which mirrors our current agreement, with the exception that we will clarify that on private development agreements.
Okay. So I will make a motion to authorize interim city manager to provide notice to Hilltop Securities to terminate its municipal advisor agreement and further authorize the interim city manager to negotiate and execute a new agreement with RBC Capital Markets as the city's municipal advisor, as well as tighten up the language in Exhibit B to provide for development services in regards to PIDs. Period.
I'll second.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion to do what she said and with a second.
I'm sorry, it could have been shorter.
All in favor?
Thank you.
All right, passes unanimously. Thank you, sir. All right, we move to number 13. Approval of the Second Reading of an Ordinance Regarding Zoning Case 18-Z-035 to amend the current zoning of TF-2-B, Two-Family, Two-PUD Planned Unit Development with the Base Zoning District of CH-2-A Cottage Housing. On one parcel of land approximately 0.94 acres in size, more particularly described by Williamson Central Appraisal District Parcel R578189, legally described as 1.5 acres out of Lot 7 of the Leander Heights, Section 2, Block A, Final Platte, Leander, Williamson County, Texas.
I was actually the person who asked to have this pulled just because it was not a unanimous vote on the first reading. So I don't have any questions, I don't know if anybody else does.
Okay.
We do have a development agreement that's part of this application and we don't have the signed copy from the applicant yet. So maybe we should delay this to the next meeting so we can get that executed. And I don't see them here tonight.
Sir, can we approve it pending?
With that condition?
Yeah. I hate to delay anything that's already at its second reading.
It's a zoning case, so I'd feel more comfortable if we waited for them. I don't want them to be delayed, but we want to make sure that contract is to their liking as well. And with it being zoning, I don't want there to be any confusion about whether it happened or didn't.
Will that be on the next council meeting or should, okay, so we can postpone until the next council meeting, which is the 19th, I guess?
Nineteen. I'll make a motion to postpone till September 19th. I'll second.
All right, all in favor? This is unanimously, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin.
And 14. Approval of the Second Reading of an Ordinance Regarding Special Use Case 19-SU-003 to consider action on a special use permit to allow for general commercial uses on one parcel of land approximately 10.316 acres in size, more particularly described by Williamson Central Appraisal District Parcel R031710 located at 100 Markingbird Hill, Leander, Williamson County, Texas.
I voted against the general commercial. I voted for the local and against the general, I'm going to skip to that.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I voted for the local commercial, the items that came before this one, and I voted against the general commercial, and I'm sticking to that.
Okay, so you need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, Ezrin.
I'll second.
All right, we have a first and second for approval, all in favor? All opposed? Again?
Again.
All right, passes six to one. All right, we're going to move to our public hearing. These are our action items. Number 27. Conduct a public hearing regarding Special Use Case 19-SU-001 to allow for a daycare with modifications to the site development standards on one parcel of land approximately 1.469 acres in size, more particularly described by Williamson Central Appraisal District Parcel R031288, generally located to the southeast of the intersection of County Road 269 and Hero Way and addressed as 1501 County Road 269, Leander, Williamson County, Texas.
This is a public hearing for a special use permit request at 1501 CR 269. Currently, the property is developed with a single-family home with a gravel drive. The applicant is requesting a special use permit for five years to allow for them to operate a daycare without adding additional improvements like a paved parking lot, so they would have a gravel parking lot. And this is an interim use until the site redevelops. The commission did hear this request at a meeting last week and they recommended approval. And the applicant is here to make a presentation.
Okay. All right, so.
I will just take a couple of minutes of your time, but my name is Tabitha Frye. I'm the executive director of Brady's Bridge. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization and we are currently leasing the subject property. So of course, the special use permit, just as Ms. Griffin described, specifically regarding the driveway, I just wanted to share a couple of minutes regarding the service that we're offering since you're all community members and it would be great for you to know what we're trying to do. So most of the time, we don't, until we go through something, we don't really understand a need for something, correct? And so in our case, that was our case for my husband and I in 2016, our son Brady in our kindergarten, and there was not an after-school program that was able to accommodate him and his needs. So Brady is up on the screen, three times, because it's really hard to get three kids to look at the camera and smile at the same time. So Brady is the one in the middle with the ladies around him. He is in a wheelchair, so obviously he has visible disabilities or needs. The other two lovely little ladies there, one of them is considered typically developing, the other, although you can't tell by looking at her, also has special needs. So what happens, if you can imagine for a moment that, you know, as Brady's parent, you're looking around for an after-school care program and after-school programs are allowed to have one teacher to 22 kids, and that's for five-year-olds. Brady's actually eight, so for him, it could be 26 kids in a classroom for one teacher. So if you think about that, you know, Brady's not a flight risk, he's not going to run away, but he could have a seizure, which could go unnoticed if a teacher is trying to take care, I mean bless them, trying to take care of 26 kids. They fulfill a great need, but it leaves Brady out of that scenario. So they're not able to offer that care. Now, a flip side of that would be you have a child that doesn't have a visible need, but quite possibly they get in that scenario of 26 kids and there's a lot of noise, and so now their need presents itself as a behavior. And now that teacher is so focused on that behavior, then the other kids aren't getting what they need. And so in both of those scenarios, with the lower ratio, you can accommodate those needs. It's just not available to the kids in our community. And so that's what we're doing with Brady's Bridge, we're trying to bridge that gap for families that are going through that same thing. Because what a parent's do, that's the child's side of it, which is super important, but now you have parents that are working. So what do you do for single-parent families or just anyone that doesn't want to quit their job, right? So we're just asking, as we continue through the process, we're hoping to have your support as we continue down the road. And then tonight on the agenda, of course, is approving the special use for the driveway. So thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you. So we do have, the public hearing is still open, we do have one person signed up to speak, Holly Jones.
Good afternoon. I'm Holly Jones. I live in a Leander ISD. Do I give my whole address?
Yes.
305 Alabaster Caverns in Georgetown, 78628. So those little ladies are mine. And I'm here to support my friend Tabitha. I had a hearing last time and I started crying, so I told myself I wouldn't do that. So being a mom of a kiddo with special needs is pretty, it's pretty hard. And being a parent is hard for all of us, but when you're limited significantly to finding a safe place that is not about that ratio and is about helping your kiddo, I have a career, I've worked for 20 years for the state of Texas and plan on retiring there. And when Maria came into my life, I'd actually lost my husband, and so it was just me and Maria. Now, I've remarried and now I have another little girl, so that's great. But when you're in those situations, as a single parent, widow or not, you want to work and you want to have your own autonomy and you want to provide and be a great role model for your child. And so we really need as a community to make sure that there are these places that we can go that understand this need and that understand that some kids, that ratio is just not going to work for us. And so, and we need to have a little bit more care. Maria actually was at a local daycare and it just didn't work out. And so I've been very creative in trying to provide extra care for her, and they were very nice about it, but she's just a little too much for some to handle, and that's okay. That's how God made her and that's how I'll keep her and forever. But really appreciate your time and sorry I do this, but thank you so much for hearing us and appreciate you coming together as a community and helping such a, to fill a need. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this time we're going to close the public hearing. We're going to move to discuss and consider action on Special Use Case 19-SU-001.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve and a second, all in favor?
I had a question.
Okay.
Ms. Frye, can you please tell us how many kids you're going to be able to accommodate?
So initially, we'll, I'm sorry. Initially, we'll start with 12 because our goal is to have a 1 to 6 ratio, but then there will also be volunteers and therapists coming in. So in actuality, the ratio could be much less, but once we get rolling, we would like to obviously increase that number.
And how can citizens find out about?
Our website's Brady'sBridge.org. So being a nonprofit, that's the way that we're offsetting the cost to keep costs down for the parents. So we do lots of fundraising and so all of that is going on now as we prepare to go through construction.
One question, do you partner with schools as well? I know at my children's elementary school, it seems like there's a big deal with that special, there's like three children in one class that all have, like they all have feeding tubes in their situations, and so there's a dramatic need for this too. But do you partner with schools and identify?
Well, we will do that. My son also has a feeding tube and he is in the ICAP classroom at Parkside Elementary in Leander. And so I know lots of the parents there. Initially, like I said, there will just be 12, but as we continue to grow, we'll continue to reach out to different schools in the district and we'd love to expand.
That's great. I just want to thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Oh, she stopped it. All right, all in favor? All right, passes unanimously.
Thanks so much.
Thank you for what you're doing. It's really good, it's really special.
Thank you.
All right, item 28 was postponed at the request of the applicant. So at this time, we're going to move to item 29. We're going to discuss the proposed annual budget for fiscal year 2020. Mr. Pierce?
Mayor and Council, I think you had a discussion on that at our last meeting, but the budget schedule for public hearing on September 19th. Tonight, we need no action, but we are available to answer any questions or additional information. Budget's based on the tax rate reduction that the council requested by one cent from the current 55, 186 per 100 to 54, 186. Includes 24 new positions, 20 in general fund and 4 in utility fund. We also anticipate ending the current fiscal year, which is 2019, with a surplus above our charter required minimum of $1,500,000. It's additional. Surplus is recommended, similar to previous budgets, to be used for funding capital improvements. And in the utility fund, we're proposing the second year of a $1 year decrease in the water reserve charge from the $4 per living unit, per LUE, to $3. The date for public hearing on the budget and adoption is Thursday, September 19th. We'll answer questions if there be any.
So if we do end up with a surplus, then we would vote at that time to use it for capital improvement projects? Or are we doing tonight, giving authorization to do that?
Yeah.
Those dollars that Mr. Pierce mentioned are already in the proposed budget, in the what we call Fund 40, the general capital projects budget.
Now, in the previous years, we ended up with more and then we did that also. And you always talk about we were very conservative with our numbers, so if there's more than that, do you automatically apply that towards CIP?
No, no, we would have to come back to the city council.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions? All right, so we don't need to take action at this time?
No, sir.
Thank you very much.
I mean, I think it's exciting that we're one of the few cities that, you know, is beyond the effective rate. Because this year with everything the legislature did, everybody chose to raise taxes to the maximum amount. So that's the world we're in, so I think we did a good job. So I appreciate what you guys did very much, so, thank you. All right, we're going to move to item 30. We're going to discuss and consider action on the First Reading of an Ordinance Levying Ad Valorem Taxes for the Use in Support of the Municipal Government in the City of Leander, Texas for the fiscal year 2020, providing for an apportioning each levy for specific purposes and providing when taxes shall become due and when the same shall become delinquent if not paid.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city charter requires two readings of an ordinance levying taxes. So in order to maintain the regular budget and tax adoption schedule, we have the first reading tonight. Hopefully it will pass. And then the second and final reading would be on your September 19th regular city council meeting.
I did have a question for you. In one of the newspapers, it was reported that in Williamson County, that taxes would be, the average taxpayer would be going up, but part of the calculation to come up with the effective rate should have taken that into account. Was that an erroneous report?
No, sir. It can be both things. So we have lowered the rate, but when you look at the average tax bill, that includes new properties that came on the roll in this past year. So the effective tax rate excludes new property, but when we calculate the average tax bill, it takes in those new properties and the newer developments are.
Sort of misleading, because if you let them out, then everybody would theoretically see a reduction, correct?
It all depends on your individual appraisal.
Well, true, you can't make a blanket statement.
Right, averages are.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a first and second for approval. Catherine Parker. All in favor? All in favor? All right. Passes unanimously. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right. Item 31. We're going to discuss and consider possible action on a contract with Ogletree Deacons for legal services related to employment litigation.
Yeah, that's, that's, hey, I don't even get it.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Item pulled. Okay. So, this has been pulled from the agenda.
Yes, sir.
So, we're going to move on to 32. We're going to discuss and consider nominating me to fill the city of Leander's voting position on the Transportation Policy Board of the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, CAMPO.
No questions. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to add, it's pretty standard and it's great that we've got someone represented there, standard for a mayor to be there. I think that helps raise our profile as a city. So, I appreciate you doing this.
All right. All in favor? Right. Passes unanimously. All right. 33. Discuss and consider directing staff to prepare ordinance amendments related to parkland fees and funding of public arts and revitalization of Old Town. So, in the past, we have had related to, Robin, did you want to go over this or do you want me to go ahead? That was a little too fast. Okay. So, one of the things that we've been talking about was the fees regarding multifamily and parkland dedication. They're three and a half acres for, per 100 units. So, this would raise them to four and a half per 100 units. Is that what you had?
You are, you're correct, Mayor. We've, we've absolutely looked at several little options and we want to continue researching for you all and for presenting options and ideas. So, that's basically where we're at.
Right.
And we're asking just for your vote of confidence to continue moving forward in that direction and coming back to you maybe in 30 days. I don't know.
Right.
That would be my recommendation is, is the second, the first meeting in October.
Okay.
If that's okay with you.
And then, related to the, is, will you bring back to us like a, where you can explain the funding for public arts?
Yes.
In Old Town? Okay.
Yes. All that. All that combined into, into one presentation.
Okay. I think it's awesome. I think public arts is something that our town definitely needs to pay attention to and to fund. So, I'm excited about that. I do believe that revitalizing Old Town, especially now with a new restaurant coming in, is essential. So, I believe in that as well and support that. And in regards, just, and also remember for everyone, you know, the approval process is sort of a give and take. So, it could be that, you know, if, if a development went above and beyond, you know, to make a development attractive or to give amenities that other apartments didn't have, that maybe they might get some relaxation, relaxation of, you know, this ordinance or another ordinance. So, especially with the changes, I think, that the legislature has made regarding cities' ability to control or dictate what kind of standards. It is a concern for us that people build to the highest standards available. So, I think tools like this give us the ability to do that. So, therein lies the reason we're, we're doing this.
Did you have a question here first?
No. Go ahead with your questions.
No. My, my only thing was, is the only thing that we're considering here is raising it from three and a half to four and a half. Is that correct?
Correct.
And, and then we're, we're saying, hey, how can those things be worked out and how we can, how can we divvy up the money at that point?
Yeah. I think that's TBD.
And is our only way to do this by going from three and a half to four and a half? Is that the only, I understand the reasoning behind it, but is that the only way?
No, that wouldn't be the only way.
It's not the only way. I mean, you could designate other avenues as well. I mean, if you wanted to create a special category or fund as part of the parks, it is in the Parks Department. So, ultimately, Mr. Tummons has control over that. But I think there are other things that can be done as far as funding public arts. And the same would hold true for Old Town because when we did Brushy Street, that was, you know, a council initiative. It was not necessarily inside the parks, was it? I don't think that was through parks, was it, redoing Brushy? So, again, so projects like that, you can go outside and it would just be its own item. So...
I'm just here as a resource. If you, I was, we, Robin and Mark and I had an initial kind of brainstorming session on some options, but wanted to get direction or get authorization before proceeding any further. And the topics that we, we looked at were having a review of parkland fees to, to see where you are with those, considering increasing those and then using a component of those for, for public art funding, as would be appropriate. What some other options for funding public art may be. And also, options for raising money for Old Town revitalization. So, those were some of the categories we looked at and had, have some initial ideas, but wanted to, with your direction and blessing, continue with those and bring back options that you can consider.
So, I have a few issues with this. I mean, there's not a whole lot of information here, but just based on the discussion that's going on, it seems clear to me that this kind of usurps the authority of the Public Arts Commission. It says very clearly in our ordinances about that, that art is to go through them and, and the decision making and the funding goes through them. And I am the liaison for that commission and we have not been consulted on any of this.
We don't want to leave out anybody that we're not supposed to leave out. So...
So, going forward, I would ask that, that, that go to public art for any sort of consideration. Because it's, I mean, when you go through the ordinance, it even says that, you know, we're supposed to be coming up with the plans for any art that's going into the city.
And this got to be a bigger picture discussion, not just art, but also parkland and revitalization of, of Old Town. So, encompass some other items as well.
Okay.
So, there's no intent to leave out anybody who should be involved.
Thank you.
And correct me if I'm wrong. Really, what we're talking about is how do we fund art and parkland? Not so much what gets chosen for art and what, what the choices are within those committees. This discussion is how can we fund this? There's some great ideas for Old Town, signage for Old Town. No one even knows that we're back here. If you're on 183 and you say Leander Beer Market or AJ's or City Hall, you know, some signage on 183. Different specific projects like that that are not in our budget, how can we go about funding them? Some of them may cross over into art. Some of them may not. They may be more parkland. So, I think what this agenda item is for is to ask staff to look into how we could go about funding.
So, that is actually one of the things that art is tasked with, is to look at the funding and to create guidelines for how funding is distributed.
This doesn't change any of that.
Right.
Well, and my second concern actually is that this first came about when it was proposed to have an Old Town Commission dealing with arts in Old Town. And my understanding is that that has been turned over to the chamber. And so, I'd like to make sure that this is not another funding mechanism to go through the chamber that bypasses our arts program when we get there.
This is, agenda item is within council's discretion to define. So, the concept of what, what it is, it's up to you for discussion here.
As far as me bringing this, you know, tonight is just coming up with the funding. It doesn't change what's existing within the Parks Department and the way they fund the arts at all. Doesn't change that at all. As far as the reason we chose to put the Old Town Committee in the chamber, it made it easier to take because one of the things we're doing is soliciting donations from businesses to revitalize Old Town. So, if somebody, or somebody wants to dedicate, you know, and give money, it's easier to do it through the chamber. So, they're a nonprofit. So, it's just, it, it, the paperwork trail is much easier than it goes into Parks Department, goes through the city. It's just much cleaner. So, the two are completely different. Anything that the Old Town through the chamber comes up with as far as, you know, initiative to do XYZ would still come before council. So, it doesn't give the authority to anybody to take money and direct it towards whatever they want to.
Well, I would like, I would like to see what staff brings to us and then we can debate the merits of whatever they bring to us. So, I would like to direct staff to go ahead and, and prepare the ordinance amendments and even have maybe some backup plans or some alternatives with that, that maybe we could possibly do if we don't like something in it. So, that would be, that would be great.
So, can we approve the changing it to four and a half with the understanding that we're going to come back with what it funds? How to distribute the funds?
Why don't we come, can we come back with all the, with options? Whatever the num, final numbers are, council has to take action on them.
Right.
Anyway. So, that, that would be in an ordinance. There would be justification for those numbers and council would act or
Okay.
make direction otherwise.
So, can we do this September 19th?
I think Mr. Tummons said that it would be maybe a month. So, maybe two meetings for now.
It's going to take that long?
It'll take a little while.
Well, and if it goes to Arts Commission, we have our meeting the second Wednesday of every month. So,
Yeah.
next week and then a month from that.
Yeah. Okay.
I will make a...
For October 3rd? I, I would, yeah.
For October 3rd?
Yes. Yes.
That means that if it's going to go through arts, it needs to go through next week.
Yeah. So, I'm sorry, Michelle, is, are you making a motion? Yes. I'll make a, a motion to approve, to direct staff to prepare an ordinance amendments related to parkland fees and funding of public arts and revitalization of Old Town to bring before us on October 3rd.
I'll second.
All right. We have a first and second. All in favor? All right. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Tummons. I think this is really exciting for not only revitalizing Old Town, but also arts too, just having a viable funding mechanism for it. So, exciting stuff. All right. So, number 34. Discuss and consider directing staff to change the SMART code from a mandatory regulation to an optional regulation in applicable areas.
So, are we going to, are you going to go right into a motion?
No.
Okay. We're the only, the only city in the area that has a SMART code. I've read it. I've rewritten it. Hutter used to have it. They got rid of it, right?
I have not investigated all the cities.
They got rid of it.
So, I don't know.
If you go look on a map, there's one dot in central Texas and that's us. Doesn't fit our city. It never fit our city. This is compromise because I don't want it. But this is what compromise looks like. We make it optional and it's over the top of the TOD. And then, it stops being a barrier to developers. Because we have been told that as long as you have the SMART code, we're not going to get the businesses that the people of Leander want. So, this is compromise.
So, you would come up with underlying zoning in areas that don't have it? Or do all areas under the SMART code not have another underlying zoning?
So, to make that even easier too, since, since there's a one and a, one and a two here, it's kind of like an either or. On the, on the first option would be to make it optional. And then, as far as underlying zoning and all that stuff, if we're going through a comprehensive plan review, would it make sense to do those things at the same time?
I think it would be a bad idea for us to come up with underlying zoning for these properties because we don't know what they're proposing to do there. And the comprehensive plan will help guide us. So, if you look at our, our current map, we do have that conventional development sector now. And that's kind of the area that's outside of the core of the TOD. And what happens is when they're ready to develop with their project, they'll come in and select their base zoning district. So, they're getting to choose what they're doing with the property. And with that, sometimes they have some minor tweaks to the ordinance that they move forward with. But that's how we've applied it throughout the TOD in areas that aren't in that core sector. So, when we're looking at the TOD on this, this map, the areas that aren't colored, they're the ones that are impacted. Outside of this boundary here is the conventional development sector. So, we're looking at maybe three or four properties that currently are in the TOD that would be subject to the SMART code. One thing that we would like to consider before we move forward with the change is consulting with the TERGE board. I think they played a role in adopting the SMART code. So, we just want feedback from them as well, just to make sure we're all on the same page with the changes.
So, I have a couple of questions. Where do I start? Okay. Is, are you required in the TOD to go through a PUD process?
The TOD is a PUD.
So...
So, if you're in the, on this exhibit, if you're looking at the, the light blue
Yes.
in this darker blue area, that's an area where if you're able to develop under the transect zones, you don't have to come get a PUD amendment. You've already got zoning. So, like this, this property down here that's blue, they could come in and select a transect that would allow them to do apartments. So, we have a couple of things they could do by right. A lot of times, they have to tweak it, like Northline. They establish their transects, but they had things they wanted to change about it. So, it's a PUD amendment.
And so, in the conventional district or sector, that's all under a PUD?
The whole bound, like everything in this dash line. This is all the PUD called the TOD.
Is there any way to get rid of the PUD outside of the core 700 acres in the TOD?
To get rid of the PUD? I mean, you would have to establish zoning for all those properties? So, you would have to evaluate what we would zone them?
Isn't the SMART code an overlay over the composite?
It's a, it's a PUD. So, that's how the SMART code was adopted, was through a PUD.
So, if you make it optional in the conventional?
So, it already is optional and conventional. So, in the conventional development sector, what you do is you come in, you say, I want GC3C. So, we just did this with the, the triangle up here and Nakfer's property right there. He came in, requested GC3C, and then he wanted to establish driveway locations. So, he did a PUD and approved it. So, you don't have to do the SMART code. They're the additional conventional development sector items that get into the ABC streets.
Right.
And with that one, he established 183 as a C street. So, he's kind of picking how his project's going to develop.
But that, you hit it right on the head. The ABC street has been a, a development hurdle for a lot of, a lot of people coming in here. So, and there's a lot of areas still in the conventional district?
So, maybe what we do is amend the conventional development sector standards and then we could modify the ABC streets. And then, it still gives the people the opportunity to come in and request the zoning that they want instead of the city establishing zoning they may not want.
So, why, why could you not get rid of the SMART code though, since it's a PUD anyway? They're still going to have to come in and, and work within the existing PUD. So, what's the advantage to keeping it?
I think what we're leaning for is making it optional so they have the choice to do it either way, right? That's what you were...
What happens if we get rid of it?
If you get rid of it, we'd have to look at how it impacts existing projects that are currently using it for their development.
Who's using it?
Well, when you look at this map, so, right now, it's Northline. So, this area here, St. David's, that's part of their property along here. ACC, they're all using the SMART code. Leander Station is already developed, but they use the SMART code. So, it's, and this, this here, the village of Leander Station. So, most of the colored properties have an approved concept plan where they've established transect zones. So, they've...
But they've gone in and they've made amendments to that, correct?
Sure. Everybody's made tweaks to it. It's kind of a base ordinance. It's like the composite zoning ordinance, people do PUD amendments to make changes.
You know, I...
It's, it's, it's kind of flexible too.
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah.
I think the problem that I've always had is, and I, and I'll give an example, the, the developer that... developer that did the domain, when I went to lunch with the guy who's in charge of the Austin developments, before I'd even sat down, just a meeting, he said, "The reason we're not in Leander is because of the SMART code." And when I told people in key positions here, their response was, "Well, that's only in the TOD, the rest is not the SMART code." But the impression that people have gotten over the years is that the SMART code's everywhere.
Like in the whole city?
Right or wrong.
Okay.
But
That is what a lot of people talk about.
Mm-hmm.
When they think about Leander, it's the SMART code, the SMART code, the SMART code. And so, they don't think, "Well, gosh, I could go the other side of the city, and it wouldn't be in the SMART code." It's just it becomes kinda, it becomes a giant, whereas maybe it wasn't intended to be.
Sure.
And, to be fair, there was a point a few years ago where aspects of the SMART code were plucked out
Yeah.
and sprinkled throughout the whole city.
A, B, C street standards in centers, yeah, so the idea was to have connections.
Yeah, shorter, shorter blocks, right?
Right.
A, B, C, so, those are huge expenses to developers, um, requiring that you back a building up to the street frontage, like we see it here away in Reagan. Everybody wonders why we did that, it doesn't make any sense. So, that's what we're talking about, so, I, I guess what I see this is, is a chance for us to ask y'all to come up with some options. I also don't like the idea that anyone in that twenty-three hundred acres has to go through a PUD process. It's very expensive, and it takes longer. So, I, I don't know what the answer is, you're the expert in this, and you, you personally have been, um, doing this for ten years or more, so
Right.
Hope I didn't tell on you. But anyway, you know, you know this code, and, um, I, I, I believe, I think, I just wanted us to be able to ask y'all to come up with some options and some solutions.
Sure.
Is there any reason that we would, you know, we would have Old Town in the TOD?
So, I think it
I've always wondered about that, because the TOD's transit-related, and
Right.
this is not transit-related.
So, the Old Town, um, actually benefits a lot from being in the TOD, so when you read the ordinance, there are a lot of incentives. So, if, um, if you're in Old Town, you don't have to pave your parking lot, you can do crush granite by right, there's no parking requirement. Um, you don't have to improve streets that are on the transportation plan. Um, before the recent House bill, the masonry was reduced, so you could do all hardy plank, so it had a few benefits, and they also have, um, dual zoning. So, if you look at our map, um, the majority of the properties are either single-family, general commercial, or the owners have selected to be a transect zone. So, like, um, the beer market, they selected a transect zone, so they could have the alcohol sales. Um, so there are a lot of things that happen that make it more flexible in Old Town.
But, excuse me, no parking requirement, is that good for anybody? All these businesses out here are complaining there's no parking.
Right. I, I understand what you're saying, yeah, the idea was, um, let the market make the demand, so, when they come with their business, like, when you look at the bakery, they built four parking spaces. So, instead of us providing a limit, it gives them an option, so they get to choose it. It's not like we say you're not allowed to have parking, but it was a way to be less restrictive and help a development happen. So, I guess it kinda goes both ways, we wanna restrict it and say, "You have to have thirty spaces," and they can't develop, or let them determine what they need to do.
My issue is the SMART code choked the market. That's not me, that's, and you know I value what you say, right?
I'm just talking about Old Town and its benefits.
Sure, I'm talking about the whole thing, right?
Yeah.
Well, you know, and, and what I'd like to say is, is this, the core area of the TOD, which is the area around the Metro Rail,
The Triangle.
It's, it's the tr- the triangle, it's almost fully in the throes of being developed out, I mean, we're gonna have the groundbreaking for Northline soon. Um, you know, and that's, well, I know the, the schedule was for, what, the fall?
I think that's right, I'm not sure.
I think, I think that's what, I think that, that's around the area.
Yeah.
Um, and so, so right now, it's, it's got like two little corners that haven't been under some sort of development agreement are being produced.
The SMART, the SMART code is a cloud over Leander. This is not me talking, this is developers talking.
For years.
For years, for years, we're the only city in the area. Austin doesn't do it. Why are we handcuffing ourselves with this monster of a code?
Well, it looks like a developer came in.
But by the way, but by the way, it was not developed, was not developed.
Well, we paid him to come in.
For what Leander is supposed to be doing. It was developed to redevelop urban cities. It was for redevelopment. You can read the studies on it. It's a monster. The code is a monster, and
I do think a lot of cities getting rid of it is a pretty clear indication that it hasn't been pro-development, you know?
And I think by having the name, just the name itself, gives a perception. Even if you can go in and change it, it's like having a, a store that, they forgot to turn the sign open, open, that says they're open, so people just drive by. They don't even bother to go in, 'cause it said it was closed. So, the SMART code is a closed sign, that's the perception.
Well, you know, there have other, been other cities and other areas that have developed, like, like, we're having Northline develop, and that area develop. They don't call it SMART code, but they call it something else, and they're doing it. I mean, some of the areas that, that you were looking at, I think up in, um, Flower Mound?
There's four up in the Dallas area.
There's, there's, yeah, there's a lot of, of that mixed use, and even Cedar Park's kinda jumping on the floor.
Because they had to redevelop. They had to redevelop.
I guess my question is, if it's so good, then why does everybody need waivers to do anything, you know? Everybody's gotten waivers.
I think, I think part of that is to be flexible with them, 'cause not everything, it's not a one-size-fits-all, it's, it's working to be
I, I like, I like Northline, I like developer Northline, I do. Leander is not just Northline. I hope he makes a gazillion dollars. I do. I want him to be successful, and I want the people of Leander to love everybody who's there, "Hey, when's the domain coming?" We're more than, we're more than the train station, I know some people can't believe that, we're more than a train station, we're more than ACC, we're more than a, a, a hospital. And the SMART code is keeping developers that everybody in this city wants, they're keeping them away. We're the only ones, it speaks for itself. And again, I value your opinion and what you say, but I'm telling you, the SMART code is not a good idea for Leander. Not, not five years ago, not five years from now. That's my opinion, but I'm just telling you.
Excuse me, Mayor, I have a comment. I would like to say that it's great that we have St. David's, and it's wonderful that we have ACC. But, we're not getting huge tax base off of those huge two developments in the core of our two TOD. The other problem I have is, we, it was originally made for twenty-three hundred acres, we downsized it, downsized it. But, there is still quite a bit of individual parcels just in the triangle that people have been trying to sell and develop for years and can't. Not to mention the land that is east of one eighty-three A, and then land that is west of one eighty-three. And every single project that you've mentioned in the TOD, they got massive waivers. Bryson did, um, ACC, St. David's.
So, Brysons couldn't develop under the conventional zoning, so they had to change the ordinance to do their development, if, even if they were under composite zoning.
I understand, I also
So, I would just have been a PUD regardless, yeah.
And, e- exactly, so, I just, I wanna be clear that the success that we're talking about has been fourteen years coming, and half of it is going to a community college and, and a hospital, which we need, but again, is not a domain. And the other half is going to a future domain by which taxpayers subsidize fifteen million dollars in order to get him to come, because, as he testified here in front of Council, he needed that money to pay for the A streets, the B streets, and then he has since mentioned to many of us that he's gonna need to come before us for even more variances and waivers. So, we want development here. It's just hasn't worked in fourteen years, and
So, my question is, if we get rid of it, um, everything's still in a PUD?
Do you mean, like, the existing PUDs we've approved, or the remaining?
Well, I'm talking about
So, you'd have to look at individual tracts, right? So, if you look, we have this piece right here, so, um, when we annex a property, it comes in as single-family rule, and then they come in and make a request. We'd have to have some kind of district that they would have, and then they could ask to change it later if they didn't like it.
Well, I thought you said earlier that everything was a PUD anyway.
Correct, it's a PUD right now, yeah.
Oh, so you're saying if we get rid of the SMART code, we got rid of the PUD?
What's your zoning, right, yeah, so if we go to the, the option we were talking about, where you're making it optional, it would be making all the properties like the conventional development sector, and then when they're ready to develop, they come in, do a and this is a quicker PUD amendment, 'cause if you're just selecting a base district, it doesn't have extra review time, you're just saying, "I want GC three A," or whatever. It's not, um, something we have to do a lot of staff review. So, I don't think it delays them unless they're doing something more than that, like, we've had people approach us about doing fifty units breaker with apartments. I mean, that would be a big deal and take time to review it, so it just depends on what they wanna do.
We've done workshops before with HBA, when there's been sort of this back and forth and, and confusion over the rules. Why not just do the same thing with this, with some of the undeveloped land?
With the landowners, and, and we have talked about this with getting, uh, some sort of workshop with some of the landowners and developers.
That way, we can hear both sides of concerns and figure out what fits, and then we're all on the same page.
I don't understand why we could, then, maybe making it optional is the best course right now.
Yeah, I mean, that would
And then has to go through a
That would open it up, for sure.
Comprehensive plan review, um, we could change it then, correct?
And I think it might make more sense to let the landowners be involved with what their zoning is, instead of us just picking it. But a lot of them are trying to sell it to someone and may not know what they want it to be, if that makes sense. Um, and we've met with several, we have a couple that are getting ready to submit, so, we'll see what they're looking at.
But they currently on, on, correct me if I'm wrong, is it already zoned in the, under the SMART code? It's, they still have to come in, if it's in the conventional district, they still have to come in and request zoning.
Absolutely, yeah.
So,
If we make it optional, it'd be the same thing that they're already doing, yeah. And then even if you're in the core of the TOD, they could come in and say, "I don't wanna comply with the SMART code, I wanna propose this instead." And we have someone that's getting ready to do that, yeah, so it'd be similar to what we did with, like, Bryson or the Triangle property.
Yeah, and to everybody's point, if we do a good job of communicating this to developers and landowners and everything too, then that would solve the problem as, as far as there being any miscommunications.
And that's one of our issues as, um, staff, when we're having meetings, we're operating under this, it's a SMART code, that's where it goes, so we could change. Like, the first item we listed was a change in policy, when we're having those development meetings, we could say the, the Council is open to doing something different, but right now, that's not the policy.
Can you tell me what traditional sector zoning is? I think that's the first time I heard that.
Traditional sector, so, when you look at the, the map, do you see the, the S one, S two? Um, when you look at the SMART code, those areas include a mixture of transects. So, it's considered the traditional sector, 'cause that's where the SMART code applies. And then conventional development, that's where you could pick the composite zoning ordinance instead.
So, the SMART code has conventional and traditional?
At the, the very back of the SMART code, there's the guide for the conventional, where it says you're picking from the composite zoning, and that one, you have the option to do SMART code if you want it to. So, it's kind of like what you're talking about.
It's still very confusing to a lot of people, and when someone's trying to sell their land, and they get asked, "What can I put here?" The question is, "Oh, almost anything," you know, it's, it's confusing. It is confusing.
So, I think I'm leaning towards, let's just make it optional, and then as we go through the comprehensive plan re- review, I think that we establish the base zoning for these areas, look at it in the future, or maybe
So, I think maybe just make it optional, and then that way, the owners can decide, so we don't do, like, city-initiated cases and picket for them.
Yeah, that, that makes more sense.
Well, yeah. I would agree, but I think a future land use map is gonna dictate some of that, correct?
Absolutely, so with the comp plan, they'll look at what the land use should be, like, the general categories, yeah.
Okay.
Making it optional?
I'm gonna make a motion to make it optional.
Oh.
That's gonna be my one.
And what this means is I would be coming forward with an ordinance that we would review, and, 'cause it has to go through P and Z and everything.
Yeah.
So.
So, after they refuse to do it, we can just bring
I make a motion to make the SMART code optional.
All second. All third.
All right, we have a motion and a second to make the SMART code optional with Robin coming back with suggestions as this goes forward. All in favor? All opposed? All right, motion passes six to one. Thank you, Robin, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, so, thirty-five. Discussing, consider adopting the council rules and procedures of council meetings.
Let me know if you've got questions.
Nobody has questions?
Oh, no.
Go ahead. I do. Oh, you don't?
I do. Okay, um, so, are we directing these questions at page, or who do I direct?
I'll stand here and
Okay.
This was a group effort, so
Okay, so there's, um, okay, there's A, which has a lot of stuff, B. One thing I looked at is under B, the agendas, um, three C. So, is this, this, a clarification is, um, does this mean that when it's gonna be put on the agenda, it's just gonna be put down as council directive? 'Cause right now, when, when it gets put on there, but it has, you know, put on there by Councilmember Cedarquist, or, or whatever, so it's just gonna say council directive on there from now on?
A good example of what this would look like is how the agenda item for the, the Old Town parkland incentives came forward, so you just had the agenda item on the agenda, and then in the executive summary, it said council directive.
Council dire, okay.
Is, is what it said.
Okay.
And then, I would expect as the item is discussed, you're gonna find out who requested it, you know, liked it, so
All right, well, I, I kinda like that, it can, keeps, keeps it on the even, I think.
We could wear a yellow jersey, like, you know, the bike riders do, you know?
You should each wear a different jersey, 'cause there could be multiple items, yeah.
Okay, and then, um, C, conducting the meeting. Number two, general conduct, it talked about council members shall show respect and courtesy to, and refrain from making disparaging comments about fellow council members, the public, and city staff in the conduct of city council meetings, outside of council meetings and social settings and on social media. Part of me says, you know, this is kind of, you know, I, I don't agree with saying really awful things about each other, but part of me says, you know, this is kind of like a freedom of speech thing. You know, during the meetings, uh, yeah, I, I, I totally agree with that being in here, like, when we're in the council meetings and we're conducting our official business, I'm okay with that, but when people are out there, and, and, you know, some people get on, on Facebook and such, I don't feel like I wanna be a part of telling them what they can say when they're outside. You know, when we're conducting the official business, but that's their personal business, if they wanna disagree with another council member on their Facebook page, I, I don't wanna say, "You can't say that." And so, that bothers me with that, I think it's a, it's a, it's a bit of a freedom of speech issue for me. And I don't know how anybody else feels about that, but, but, but that's how I feel about that.
I do, but I have a bunch of questions, so I'll go last.
Do you guys wanna hit that all at the same time?
Should we all address each item that she's bringing up?
Uh, you can, I mean, I'll go down the line and let everybody ask questions.
Start to your right.
Okay, Michelle, do you have any more questions?
Um, no, not right now.
No, I, I really don't have any questions. I, I was gonna comment on that, that, I, I mean, I agree, we should be able to say what we wanna say, but we can also say it respectfully. So, there's nothing in here that says we can't say anything, but I can just as easily be respectful and courteous and tell you what I think about you at the same time, and maybe it's good, maybe it's not, and I'm losing you because you're here. But, I think there's a way to do that, and it's just being respectful of each other, respecting the position, and, um, where we don't have to agree. But, I mean, I respect everybody up here anyway, and I've so, I, I don't see anything wrong with that in the language if we understand the intent. And that's, that's what I, I gather as the intent, is just, we don't have to agree, we can say what we wanna say, but we can be respectful of each other, that's, that's all. Am I right? Is that the intent?
That is the intent.
Okay, thank you.
Seems like all roads lead to social media.
Seems like all roads lead to social media, freedom of speech, everything's social media. I'm baffled, I'm, I'm baffled, we're raised as a society about social media. Look, we've been hit for, what, nine months now, from day one, we've just been hit and you've not seen a negative word. Not a negative word, not on social media, not in circles. We're trying to get to a, a behavior where the city volunteer needs to look up here and they need to trust their leaders. They might not like us, but they need to trust us. And if we're out there on social media or any corners bashing each other, it's not, it's, look, when I was in the Army and I was a non-commissioned officer in front of the privates, in front of the soldiers, you did not, you were professional. And that's all we're kind of looking for, these rules, is being profi- professional. I don't go in my work and start dogging people. We just want, we're family up here, sometimes we're dysfunctional family, but we're family and there's no need. And Josh, make sure you're getting this, I'm not saying that nobody has the right to go on social media and call me whatever names they want to. Look, I've learned some new ones and I was in the military for twenty-three years and I'm like, "Whoa, okay." I'm just saying we should respect each other and we, you can go disagree on social media without saying somebody is a bigot or a homophobe or a racist or this or that or whatever. We keep labeling people on both sides and I'm telling you, as a city council, as leaders of the city, we need to set the example. And if we can't, we're in trouble.
I agree. My son taught me a term called intellectual diversity and I love it. And for some reason, we've morphed into this society where we can't disagree respectfully. And I would like to see this council rise up and be an example to our community, who, by the way, the majority of our community, I've been here almost twenty years, we're a close-knit, supportive community. If anyone needs something, we're, we're there. I think we need to reflect that amongst ourselves. We can disagree and disagree respectfully, it's just professional kind of corporate decorum. And I don't think that this limits your free speech. I did. Okay, we didn't, okay, sorry. On, under E, reconsideration of matters two, number two. I would like kind of a, maybe a, a retooling of some of these words. I want to make it clear that, um, it says here for matters that have not received four votes of council, either for or against a motion. I think we need to clarify, um, not received a majority of votes for the council members there. Because if a council member isn't here, they're not here. And I don't think that we need to delay issues because a council member isn't present. So that shouldn't be an excuse to be able to bring something back. Now, maybe that's too strict.
But what, what this is intended to deal with is, sometimes you'll make, and this has happened before in a prior meeting, in a prior council, is a motion was made and it failed, there were six people, and it failed to receive, you have to have four votes under your charter for an item to pass. And so the, there was a motion made and the motion did not receive four votes, it did not receive four votes, so it failed. You had three people vote for and three people vote against. And so, and I, and I saw the council in that situation, kind of like, well, you know, was that a definitive vote? Did that, did that finish this item? Because you didn't have a majority voting, you didn't have the four votes on either side of the matter. And so I have seen that lead to dissatisfaction with the council feeling like, did this, did whoever, and it is particularly in the zoning case, did, did the applicant get a real vote on this item because we did not have a majority of the council? And by majority, it's four, because that's the minimum.
So can we state that a majority?
We, we, we need to say four, because that's your minimum, it has to be four. Um, and so that's the, the, that's the least number of council members that can vote in order for an item to pass. And so this gives the ability of someone to say, "Look, I don't really feel like this was really addressed, I wasn't there, I need to be there as a council member." So this item either is going to fail for four or it's going to pass for four.
Okay, I understand that.
And that, and, because the general rule is on a motion for reconsideration, it, the person on the prevailing side of the vote has the power to bring something back, not someone on the losing side of the vote. And so when you have that unsatisfactory three-three, who, who's prevailing and who's not? You, you, that's one where you want to allow anybody to bring that back, so we can get a real majority vote in that. So that's, that's what that is about.
So Paige, I have a question on that, just in the, for the sake of conversation. If there's seven of us here, one doesn't vote and it's three to three, can you make the vote? Or does, I mean, can, can someone abstain from voting?
A person can abstain, they may need to abstain, and so.
So that could leave it as three to three.
It could always leave it as three to three and then y'all could just use your discretion on, is it something that makes sense to bring back? Because that person may always have to abstain.
Yeah, and it, it could be a, like, maybe I just choose to not make a decision on that, it has nothing to do with me, but maybe, and I'm just using myself as the example. And would that, would that still be four? Because you wouldn't really fix it.
Uh, so if you abstain from voting, you're.
Just by choice.
By choice, well.
I really should vote, I'm, I'm, yeah.
Yeah, so I appreciate you throwing yourself out there as that person in that example. I have never seen anybody here do that, y'all all step it and.
It's only on American Idol, isn't it?
Y'all all step up and vote even when it's going to be a difficult vote. So, uh, if, if you have someone who is not abstaining because it's not because of a conflict of interest, then we're going to have, we're going to encourage that person to, to do that, but I've never seen anybody here shy away from that.
Thank you.
Yeah, but, yeah, it's not an automatic coming back, it's only if someone brings it back, it gives you the ability to bring it back.
Okay, I just had two last comments. The, because this is the council rules and procedures, I'd like, um, to add in section three point oh six, I believe it's of the city charter, uh, outlining, um, the attendance of council members and if any member fails to attend three successive meetings, that's just a clause I'd like added in there. In addition to that, you left us this great new cheat sheet up here of the new law regarding closing statements. I think why not put that in there? I think that helps the public understand, you know, why we may or may not do certain things.
What sort of clarification are you asking for with the three successive meetings?
I just want it added in there because these are council rules. This is basically, correct me if I'm wrong, we're interpreting our ordinances in an easily referenced manner of how council procedures are going to work. And then we've added in some decorum items and missing meetings is one of those requirements of council. There's, in our charter, there's a whole list of.
Well, in the charter, it says that, you know, you can be subject to a vote of removal if you've missed three or more meetings without a good cause. And I think that, uh, this came up previously where, um, an, an ordinance was once done to match the charter and when the charter was changed, the ordinance was not. And it added a bunch of confusion because you've got something in two different places that say two different conflicting things and the charter prevailed. So I'm actually against repeating anything in an ordinance that's already done in a charter, just to eliminate that confusion.
So, is the intent of this document to include some of the charter?
That's within the council's discretion, the, the one that I think we've drafted around to, um, implement is how council members get an item on the agenda, for the purpose of making sure you have a right to do so, but you've got to do so in a timely manner and still keep within a reasonable meeting length, though.
It added clarification.
And adding clarification, so that's an implementation of the charter, that's an example of implementation of the charter. I'm looking for that, the meeting requirement.
I think it's.
Yeah, if you, without good cause.
Three point oh six.
Yeah, three point oh six.
Corum in attendance.
Yeah, so the, that provision says it's the duty of each member to attend each regular and special meeting and the failure to attend three successive meetings without good sufficient cause shall constitute misconduct in office. And then, so that's the statement. And then the, 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 the issue about the misconduct, that requires you have, that gets into, conduct. You, you, so a council member can be removed for misconduct, so there would have to be the notice and hearing requirement of whether missing meetings constituted misconduct and then that comes down to, was a meeting missed with good, without good and sufficient cause? And so.
And I think there's wording in the charter that does say that if you have cause, you're clear, right?
Right.
You have to notify the mayor, the city manager, whatever.
The, the way I've seen this implemented is that, you know, the council gets notified that a council member is going to miss a meeting and then the council takes that up and says, "I've been informed that so-and-so is going to miss the meeting and here's why. We find it's good cause and we excuse, the council votes and excuses the, the absence." And they extend each other courtesy on illnesses, vacation, that kind of thing. And once the council has approved it, it's not, doesn't count towards the three, it, it's, that's the good cause. Council has accepted that as good cause.
So I know there's a lot of other, um, I guess it's rules and guidelines that council members are required to adhere by and maybe this document isn't supposed to include all of that. So that, that's fine if you don't think it's necessary, because it's already in the charter.
It's redundant. That, that's within council's discretion, this is a beginning point for y'all to build on as you, uh, live with this document and with each other. And we, we've got a provision in there for it to be reviewed at least once a year and you can take it up more frequently if you need to.
I think our biggest goal here was not to overreach, especially when just starting this thing and to get on the same page. So that was the, the, one of the main things as far as like finding a way to trust each other, finding a way to unify, finding a way to do these things. It was also not to overreach to breach that ability to, um, to unify, so.
Okay, well then, my, that's fine then, leave that out, it's in the charter. But the last statement about the closing statement, should maybe that be added in here?
That, that's within council's discretion to, to add that.
Because the new law says to stay with, uh, closing statements only consist of items, community interest regarding no action will be taken.
Yeah, y'all, y'all had a question, one of the couns, new council members had a question about what can I say during council member closing statement? So it was provided for everybody.
Is that a new law?
No, that's been the law, yeah.
Oh, thank you, there you go, I thought it was new.
It was newly placed in front of me, so I thought it was new, okay, thank you.
So what you're saying is would it be helpful to have it in there for, not for this council necessarily, but for future councils if somebody new came on, they could say this is what it is?
Yes, because I never knew this, my training didn't cover that.
Okay.
And then my final, there was. My final statement is, I, I, I would like to impress upon council that this is going to be a dynamic, living organism and that I don't want to wait for a year to review this since this is our first year. I think that we live with it for a few meetings and I just would hope that everyone could be open and discuss maybe where we need to tweak this. Is that allowed?
Of course.
I think sections, well, F two and three, I think, provide for that for us, right?
Oh, I thought it was just for a year.
Well, any ca, any council member can request it to be placed on the agenda in a timely fashion, so. Or you can vote tonight about when you want it brought back for review.
Okay, oh, well, thank you, I didn't read the last line, yeah, he said that.
Council member Cederquist.
Okay, I wanted to kind of go through this just with some clarifications, um, in order. So, section B two about the consent agenda, um, talks about contracts or expenditures requiring council approval that are within the budget. Contract city staff was authorized to negotiate and bring back for approval. Is this all contracts?
I'm not sure if I'm going to answer your question the way you're, what you're asking, but all contracts, the city council, the city manager has purchasing authority under the charter and so the city manager's authorized to, um, enter into contracts that are within the budget and that are certified to be within the budget uh, that are under, under fifty thousand dollars, and so those don't typically come to, to council, so those would not.
So under fifty thousand dollars, those would be exempt, those wouldn't be on our consent agenda?
Correct, yeah, those, those would not be ones that you would see. We're just trying to kind of, um, the, the purpose of the consent agenda was, you're moving more towards, let's put certain items on the consent agenda to be efficient, but any council member can request an item be pulled off of that if they want to discuss it.
Okay, and that's just what I wanted to clarify for the public, is that that's staying the same as already, as what we had.
Correct, correct, and the, so the consent, and we're dr, we're dr, putting some rules around it, so y'all have agreed on as a body. So just kind of to step back, these are y'all's rules, you, um, you decide what rules you want to live by to the extent you're staying within the bounds of the law. And, um, you change those rules as you need to to make them work for you. And so the purpose of the consent agenda item was so that you have agreed upon kind of routine administrative, ministerial type items that don't typically require a lot of discussion, like this contract is in the budget, we've already asked you to go negotiate and bring this back, uh, we're accepting infrastructure, we're doing second reading of a zoning ordinance, those types of things. So we've defined it in there so that, that you feel comfortable with, this is the category of items going on that agenda.
Perfect, thank you. Um, also on B two, consent agenda, provided that any council member may request that an item be pulled from the consent agenda for discussion, does the request by a council member necessitate automatic removal from the consent agenda?
That's the intent of that rule.
Should that be reworded then to clarify that it is an automatic pulling and not just a suggestion?
Uh, can you tell me the section again?
It's the last sentence on B two and I believe that that is, um, outlined in our charter that a council member may, when an item is being pulled, it automatically then goes to the regular agenda.
The, the charter doesn't get into that level of detail, so if there's a desire to, to clarify that, we can do that.
Just a clarification that yes, that is an automatic pulling and not just a request that can be denied or subject to a vote or something like that.
No, council member may pull.
Yeah, that's okay, but maybe.
May request.
And then the, then the item shall be pulled for discussion during the regular agenda, some things.
So I was just hoping to, yeah, tighten that language to make it clear.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. All right, B three A, council member requested agenda items. Part A is, a council member that wishes to place an item on an agenda must submit the agenda item and the background material described in subsection B below to the city manager's office by five P M, eight calendar days prior to the regular meeting. And B says, the council member shall provide the city manager with materials providing background information on the agenda item that consists of, at a minimum, a written explanation about the purpose of the agenda item and any additional relevant information or documents. So, can you please help lay out for us how a council member would get the background information to be included in that agenda?
So the, the concept here is, so there's three things. One, backup material can consist of, at a minimum, just an explanation. Here, here's what I want to discuss about this item, so that an executive summary can be prepared that gives at least the, an explanation of what it is, so that the rest of the council knows, okay, that, that's what this is. I'm, 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 feel like I have enough information, I can have a discussion. If you as a council member have some materials that you've gotten just in your course of being a council member, and I know we're talking about how are we going to interact with staff is where this is going on this, but.
Later on, I can circle back to that, yes.
Yeah, and so that item is, um, so the second kind of threshold of background is, okay, I've gotten some documents that I want to share with you and this is relevant and I haven't got, I haven't gotten it through staff, so here it is, I'm going to include that as well. And that's just so everybody has the same information at the same time. And then the third level is, there's been some kind of, um, get, gathering of information with staff. And so there's kind of two levels of that. One is, um, so, so you should, when we've talked about it in here with balancing the city charter requirement that council members don't direct staff, um, and that you go through the city manager for contacts with the staff. And so, and we've also wanted to leave some flexibility for, so you've got your, your interim here now and you, you're going to have a various city managers that serve the city and this will change over time. But different city managers will dictate how they want you to interact with staff and, and that will be something, you want to allow that city manager some flexibility to tell. to tell council, okay, uh, yeah, go ask that person, just copy me on the email or let's all sit in a room together. That, that's, you let that city manager some flexibility to deal with that. And so to the extent you've had some initial gathering of information through the city manager, you've got to go through the city manager to do that. And that would be provided as well. Once the council reviews the item, then if it's a council directive that requires additional working with staff, then, and the council authorizes you to do that, then you have the authorization of council to go for the full, um, process of working with staff. And you do that with, through the city manager as the city manager has, um, outlined how they want that, those interactions to go.
So does that mean then that everything that's brought forward on an agenda by a council member is going to be sort of like how we saw this one done where it's permission to work on something and then we go work on something? So it comes back twice?
That, so that's something that we should coordinate with the city manager on. I think it's, the language leaves flexibility on how you manage that.
Okay.
That stays respectful of the city manager form of government.
Yes.
So it could.
Previously, it was just sort of an open door thing as long as everybody CC'd the city manager on the email. It was okay.
Right.
Like on the response.
Right. And, and so that, we're not meaning to, to dictate only one way of doing that.
Right. Totally understandable.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of are we bringing things forward multiple times when we could cut it shorter?
That may happen or it may not happen.
So that'll be sort of the discretion of the next city manager.
And the current.
Oh, yes. Okay. B three C, council member requested agenda items. Council member requested agenda items will be identified as council directive in the executive summary. Why are we concealing the name of the council member who brought forth the item?
That's just was a suggestion from staff. I mean, or, I, that was just a suggestion how this came forward. The.
That came from staff?
I'm not sure where that came from. I think we were dealing with, so items got posted on the agenda with a council member next to it.
Right.
And we just thought that there was maybe a cleaner way to use the executive summary to identify, you know, they say staff and who's presenting. And so the, what was suggested was a presentation with council directive in the executive summary.
And some of that is a council member might start an item and then somebody, it might go two or three meetings and not go forward, then it's brought back again. And then we're putting on the second or third. We don't know who, do we put the originator on? Do we put the second person on? Do we put the third? Or they mentioned, somebody might have mentioned it and we put their name when that's really not their item. They're not necessarily wanting to be the sponsor of it. It just helps us to know more clearly defined without making errors or making judgment calls or guesses about what's going on in that meeting.
Is there another city that does that?
A lot of cities don't put anything.
Most of them put anything out there.
Really?
And most of them say council director.
We're acting as one. We're not supposed to be highlighting our own. Do we cover in here if, let's say there's a topic I want to work on, but I need help? How can I bring that forward and ask that a, a committee, a subcommittee of council help me work on? I don't know. Fireflies in the sky. I don't know what it is. Yes, an issue. It's late. It's getting late.
You would request the item be on the agenda to authorize that and authorize a subcommittee? Yeah.
Okay.
And then to the extent there's any need for interaction with city staff, there's a subsection D that puts some rules around that and allows some coordination with the city manager and leaves the city manager flexibility to dictate how he wants that done.
So with the council member directive, not putting a name, not having that transparency, does that have a conflict with item B three A where a council member may submit no more than two agenda items per meeting?
No, because the, the city manager and the mayor are keeping up with how many items each person is requesting. So it's not a, it's not a secret. It's not intended to be a lack of transparency.
Well, it's a secret from us. And from the public.
It's y'all's, it's y'all's, y'all's rules and y'all's decision. But, um, they'll, they'll know by the, at the meeting, the person who's wanting to talk about it will talk about it. So if, this is y'all's, these are your rules. This is a suggestion. You modify it as you determine appropriate.
Okay. C two, conducting the meeting. Council members shall show respect and courtesy. We've talked about this already. As far as social media goes, we already have a policy for that, right?
We do. It's a best part. And again, these, these rules are your social media policies guidelines and it's suggested, there's some decorum in your social media policy. And there are suggestions and guidelines and these rules are y'all's agreements amongst each other on how you want to conduct yourselves. Some of this brings in the charter and so you, you got to follow the rules as far as the, the charter goes and the implementation of the rules. So, you know, we're going to have deadlines now for when you get items to the, the city manager and the mayor for putting, being put on the agenda. So some of these are, you know, that's the rule. You didn't meet it. Sorry, you can't go on the agenda.
Right.
Unless there's some time, timing issue.
Legally speaking though, we can't, um, we can't regulate what council members say outside of a meeting, right?
Well, it's, so you're agreeing here how, what kind of decorum y'all want to engage in as a council. And then as far as enforcement on that side goes, you know, these are your agreements amongst yourselves. You may call each other out and say, I don't like how you handled that. I think you could have behaved better. Those types of conversations will happen amongst yourselves, um, inside or outside of the meeting.
It's not a formal disciplinary.
There's not a formal disciplinary on, on this, this particular type of item.
Yeah, again, that's why we, we decided rather than putting anything in there like if this happens, then this happens, uh, we didn't want to overreach on something like this. So I think this is an agreement between us to do the right thing and, and be above those things. And then, you know, if we have an issue with it at some point and council decides to bring it back because we have a problem or not, we can always decide that later. But this isn't the time for that.
And to discuss, to discuss with a, if you have a disagreement with, um, a city staff or a policy in place, that first and foremost, we're keeping in mind, we, we're trying to build a community. We're not trying to divide a community. And there are ways to speak your opinion without causing divisiveness.
So that brings me to my next subject, which is that it's open to a lot of interpretation. What's divisive to some might not be divisive to others. And we've even heard that appear tonight. So I'm just a little bit concerned about that. Not enough to, to pull it or anything, but, um, one of the things that I thought of when I read this is wouldn't it, if somebody is strictly interpreting it, wouldn't it put an incumbent at a significant disadvantage when they're campaigning if they can't talk about what they would improve upon?
That's, I don't think that's necessary. That's not what that is intended.
Well, it's up to, it's like beauty, right? It's in the eye of the beholder. So saying I didn't agree with this council member on this, some council members would take it as disparaging.
Calling, calling somebody corrupt on social media without providing any evidence. We want to prevent that up on the council.
Calling them names.
You can go call Jason's a hillbilly hick. Um, whatever.
Well, that, that kind of, I mean, that's, that, that's an example probably of a personal attack.
And that's what I wanted the clarification on is it's not, I wish we did this, something like that. It's the extremes. It's the name-calling. It's, it's slander.
I think it would be more like me going, Christine's motives for this were this. She's doing this because she wants this or this or without.
Well, you've seen all the emails the last two weeks. People are full of what my motives are.
Look, man, it's great reading. I, everybody should run for office. It's.
Look, man, it's. The, the rule, the rule, those types of rules are only as good as people, um, choosing to comply with them. And so, and the first, the general guidelines at the beginning, there's, you know, those are the types of things that are there, like treat people with respect, no personal attacks. This is not intended to keep you all from disagreeing with each other or anything staff does. It's just meant to, um, uh, and obvious, I mean, you should disagree. You should have healthy debate. Um, it's just, the intent of this is to, um, allow you to do so in a way that focuses on the merits as opposed to personal attacks and try to have everybody keep their eye on, on that method of disagreement for the purpose of reaching a good conclusion.
Awesome.
And again, these are y'all's rules. You decide what you want them to say.
C three A, consideration of agenda items. Council members shall confine their discussion concerning a motion or a question to the merits of a motion made and seconded or to a question already presented to them. Confining the discussion to the merits of something, that would apply to executive session as well, correct?
Yes, but the motions are, the, in this case, the motion happens in open, in session here. So it's an open session discussion.
And, and that's what I was sort of getting at is that we're talking about the merits of whatever the agenda item is, not necessarily the motion, right? Or do you want to confine that wording to just the motion?
The motion, isn't the motion confined to the agenda item?
What this is intended to do is when you have made a motion, when there's been a motion in a second, for there to be a, uh, when you're discussing that motion in second, then the discussion is on that particular motion so that you can reach a conclusion on voting on that motion.
But isn't that the same as what we should be doing with the agenda item itself? Confining the discussion to just that item?
That's, I mean, that's correct. That's just, that's, this one is particular to the motion. So, but in general, the discussion about an item should, uh, pertain to the agenda posting.
So if it's just confined to the motion, then are we undoing the ability to talk through how we would add amendments to a motion?
No.
Okay.
That's not intended to limit amendments to the motion.
I guess I'm not understanding what this particular part means then.
You're saying the motion versus the agenda?
Yeah, there's an agenda item.
I understand the agenda item versus the motion. What I'm saying is what scenario are we not confining our discussion to the merits of the motion?
And so let me back up. Some, some of these items, you, there's a lot of sample rules that we looked at. And, and preparing a section of the rules, sometimes it was helpful to have a preamble about, okay, this fits into this particular section here. So some things you'll see in here that weren't trying to right or wrong or correct us in or something. It was just useful to have because it pertained to the entire, uh, section that was dealing with consideration of agenda items, for example. I think that's, that what we are trying to do here with respect to the consideration of agenda items, there, there's a desire, there has been a desire expressed of council on how we have organized discussions about agenda items and make sure everybody has the ability to speak on an item and that we, um, when, when the discussion has been concluded, that there's the ability to say, okay, we, we think it's time to just call the question and continue. But balance, calling the question with, has everyone had a chance to say what they need to say? And how do we, what is our method for allowing every, every member on council to have a chance to comment, which is what the mayor's been doing with this agenda item by going down the line and everyone's going to have a say? And so that's, that's the intent of this subsection A. It kind of dovetails into how do we have an organized discussion about.
Okay.
An agenda item.
So it's not that we've been doing something that's been derailing? Cause that's what I was trying to figure out.
No, no, no. So don't take it as y'all were doing something terrible. No, that it was more of a, how do we have an organized discussion? How do we make sure everybody has a chance to speak? And how do we, when it starts to go on and on, which maybe I'm going on and on, um, how, how do we call the question page? Yeah. That's, that's what this whole section's about.
Okay. C three B, I know y'all knew it was coming. Council members shall raise their hands to indicate a desire to speak. We've done this before and it didn't work out very well. What would be different this time?
It's in a rule now. It's in writing.
Unfortunately, our mayor is in the position where he's center and so it's hard to see both ways at once.
Well, I think what the intent, what I think would help me is just like we did tonight where we went down the one side, everybody over here pulled your cannons. Sorry, it wasn't.
Oh, that was rude. That was disparaging. No, I'm kidding.
We didn't pass it yet. And, uh, you know, just make sure that everybody gets a chance to speak and one person isn't dominating it. You know, because, I mean, we all have the chance, especially hopefully through the, the packet sessions of, you know, getting our questions answered before we get on the dais. We have all week that we can consult with the city manager and get answers to questions. And, uh, I think the thing is we just don't want to go till 12 like tonight.
We're not going to.
Well, I have to say, I think you've done a pretty good job at that of making sure that we all speak because we can be hesitant and you're reaching out.
I, you know.
Just go down through place numbers.
I'll look to the right first and then I'll look this way. And we'll start there and we'll go down. And then everybody, before you, you get one question, I, and then it goes, you wait until everybody has a chance to speak before you ask a second question. So I'll always say, is there anything else? And I'll look this way and I'll look that way.
Okay. So we're going to do one question at a time?
I think that would be good.
I mean, I prefer over the hand raising.
To, we have the chance at the packet meeting to ask all the questions we want. So hopefully we can get that done and not repeat the same thing on the dais that we did on the packet meeting.
Well, today we didn't have a packet meeting.
I understand. I understand we did not have a packet meeting today.
Well, I'm just saying it's not always going to.
Well, I think one question would be what I would prefer.
I think, um, again, the direction here is a starting point. All right. There's obvious, there's certain issues that some of us are passionate about and we're going to spend more time. And I don't think any person up here is going to say, that's it, we're done. I don't think that's going to happen, even though we've kind of got, I don't think that's happened. If it did, I'd probably have an issue with that myself.
I think the, the, the thing we want to avoid is two people kind of getting into a debating an issue and then everybody else is kind of twiddling their thumbs going, you know? And then you kind of, you're ready to kind of vote on it and you didn't just ask a question.
Well, I think when somebody else asks a question, sometimes it triggers a question for me. You know, I hadn't thought about that. That leads to this. So I, I would prefer being able to ask a question when it comes to mind if I'm not prepared for that question, uh, as opposed to going down the line, then I've missed my opportunity. You know, where, oh, well, that makes me want to ask a question. So we, we don't want to restrict that. Yeah, yeah.
So are we eliminating the hand raising part then?
I think she's asking that she raises her hand.
Yeah. I mean, just if we have a question, we should be able to ask a question when that question comes up, but not interrupting.
Well, if I look down this line, you know, I'm looking at you three to see if you guys have another question. That's when I think raising your hand.
So it would not be consistent?
Well.
No, and I don't mean that in a bad way. It's not going to be every time somebody, you know, has anything to say or all.
I mean, it's really for the second question, you know? Because I'm going down the line the first time and I'm going down the line this time. So after everybody's spoken once, I'm going to look back this way. Is there any other questions?
You know, we're going to mess this up a lot, right?
So you mind if I add in here? Cause I'm trying to obey the rules already.
You could say.
Okay, mayor has recognized me because I raised my hand. I think the point is when you start going up and down the line, right? That it, it, it's that order, right? And we, we need to be strict about that. And we need to write our questions down. And we need to write our questions down, if it goes past us, we need to make sure we write them down, or that we're, and then, because that'll get order, and maybe a lot of questions will get asked, because a lot of times when stuff starts going back and forth, the question may have been asked if we would have just went down, like Marcy likes to ask a lot of questions. So a lot of our questions will get asked when it gets to her, right? So, it's good, Marcy, I love you.
We just need all your questions ahead of time, yeah.
And then, so after that first round goes, so if, if Chris is last, and then somebody has a question, and we raise our hand, and then it's, you know, then I don't start rambling on like I am now.
I mean, because I don't want to have to go to everyone the second time. So I'll look this way, just raise your hand.
Well, what if you just reserve the sort of thing for when there's a lot of discussion? Because most of the stuff, ninety percent of the stuff we do, isn't going to have twenty minutes of discussion, it'll have like three people asking questions.
I would prefer everybody raise their hand the second time.
I agree, I think it can't hurt, we're trying to build some decorum.
I mean, actually, we take off on Robert's rules, where everybody raises their hand every time, that's ridiculous, but I think we should try.
F two says suspension of rules. Any provision of these rules not governed by the city charter or code may be temporarily suspended by two-thirds of all members of council. So if any time we don't like it, two-thirds vote, bye-bye.
Okay, so if we're keeping the hand raising thing, if two of us raise our hands to speak and one is called upon, is the other to keep their hand raised while the first one is speaking, or can we put it down?
I'll always call you if you have your hand raised.
It has not happened in the past. Okay. It has.
He's going to look to the right and ask, are there any further questions? And then he's going to look over here and say, are there any further questions?
And this doesn't include for the purpose of making a motion or a second, right?
No. I don't think so.
C three D, consider, consideration of agenda items, you're just missing an indent.
Thank you.
C four, executive session. Matters discussed in executive session will be kept confidential, and city council members shall not discuss matters discussed in executive session outside of the executive session. There are already a number of laws that give protection to certain topics in executive session, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so this would, this would only apply to items that weren't already covered under the law?
This is intended to, so there's a best practice, which is to keep what's in discussed in executive session confidential. There is als, there are also laws that govern various items that get discussed in executive session. Having a rule here that talks about, just keep it confidential, keeps, it helps with just the council having to navigate of what's confidential and what's not, what can I talk about from executive session, what I, what can I not talk about from executive session? My recommendation would be that if there's items that have to be discussed publicly from executive session, that that be a decision that the council makes, that you all have deliberated and determined that it's appropriate and in the city's best interest to do that.
The Attorney General's opinion JM 1071 determined that those in attendance in an executive session could make statements about the subject matter of that session, and the argument being made there was that it was a prohibition, the First Amendment. Would this not be in conflict with that?
That's up to you, the, again, these are your rules to decide if you want to abide by these rules as a council or not. So these rules are as good as y'all's decision to abide by them. What also I think is difficult to navigate sometimes are what is confidential by law, what's not. There are situations in which, there's, there are also laws that govern using information that you obtain confidentially outside, and those involve matters of personal gain, and not saying that's ever happened or would happen, but having a rule like this could assist with avoiding issues related to keeping up with what's confidential and what's not, and keeping in compliance with laws. So that's the purpose of that agenda item.
So, Christie, what about, in, in respect to that, just changing the words to should be kept confidential instead of will, or, you know, should not be, I mean, it's kind of a suggestion anyway, it's not a, this is not a law.
I would prefer that, that would be good.
And then it's, at least it's kind of within your line of...
It's all a suggestion, so it doesn't really matter, this is not saying we're going to be, you know, something's going to happen, but it's just a, it would be better if you...
I would prefer it's not will be.
Aye.
And the reason why is, look, there are, there are things that have leaked in certain instances that, I mean, I, I thought they were protected, and the whole reason of going into executive session has a little bit of anonymity to it, you could be negotiating a contract which needs to be kept secret, you could be talking about employment manner, matters that need to be kept secret, because there are legal liabilities. I, I would like it kept in there, will be, you know, and then if, if we feel as council members that we should have the right on tonight, said it didn't pertain to any of those, this executive session, and we can say, I'd like to take a vote that we make this a public, this can be a public discussion outside of...
I think that's a perfect resolution to that, because if, if as a city council, we can't, first off, new council members, we don't know, we need directions, this is a nice little direction sheet, sheet, but anytime a city council member may expose the city itself to any kind of legal liability, or, again, just, you know, bad talking, I, I don't think that we, we need to set, set ourselves up for that. If it's in executive session, you're our city attorney, you're telling us what is going to be discussed in there, many times you've stopped conversation, saying this is not what we're allowed to talk about, so I like that we say that is maintained by your, your direction, that it is confidential, and then if a city council member has an item that was exposed during there that they would like brought to a public forum, there should be a method by which to do that.
I mean, you can, you can, as a council member, vote to put it on the regular agenda, right? Instead of the executive session. You can ask for a vote to have it moved from executive session to the regular agenda in open session, correct?
It depends on what it is.
Why does it depend on what it is?
Because they're... There may be circumstances in which discussions would be confidential by law, and so I suppose you could vote for it to be discussed in open session, and then...
Then you would come up here and give advice not to do that, because such and such law says that, for instance, employment matters remain in executive session.
Right, that would be the example, or it would, there would not be much to be said, because it wouldn't be, it, it wouldn't, wouldn't want to put you on the position of having that in an open session, so, I mean, there's the possibility of a majority vote, where people want to discuss something in open, and that's, that's your prerogative to do so.
But how do you do that, though, without a, a means to have it moved to open session?
A motion and vote would do that. You have it, you, yeah, you could do that by motion and vote.
Yes, sir.
Can you give, I don't, if this is even legal, so this is one of the things, can you give a brief description of what executive session is for, so the public understands when we go out the door and, and it looks like it's a lack of transparency? Because I think that, that adds to this conversation. What's the purpose of an executive session?
Well, the state law requires that meetings amongst the, a quorum of the governing body be held in a public session, and that notice of the subject matter be posted, so that the public can attend and see how the council is making its decisions, so that there's transparency for the public to understand how decisions affecting it are being made. The state law also recognizes there's circumstances under which having a public discussion would hurt the city, and so there are defined exceptions for having discussions in executive session, and those include certain economic development discussions where the city's position would be hurt in negotiating an economic development agreement, if those discussions were held in public. Purchasing property is another example, selling property, where if you discuss your plans of, as to acquiring or purchasing property, that would hurt your ability to get a good price on either the sale or the, the purchase of property, those are a couple of examples. So, now, and, and with, I want to make sure that we're clear, because...
Protection of the city, right?
Correct.
Okay.
But, in the discussion, there's that, so this, this, this isn't the only city that would have a provision like this in its code of conduct, or its council rules, and so you wouldn't be the only one that had a provision like this. The, the discussion about the, the free speech issue, we of course don't want to tread on that in a, in an appropriate way, and again, these rules are as good as the, your agreement to abide by them. The main purpose of this is to have it in front of the council to be aware of that there are going to be, there, there's confidentiality involved in executive sessions, and so, so that, it's, again, it's like the, the closing statements, I didn't know, well, let's put it where it's more visible to you.
And if a council member felt that a law was being violated in the executive session, this provision wouldn't keep them from reporting that?
Well, that's, that's correct. It would be...
And I think there was also, I mean, we had a conversation about this, like, if there was an issue with something ethically being wrong, or something being wrong there, if I was the council member in that particular meeting, I would say to everybody, this is wrong, and I'm going to go create, I'm going to go talk about ethical violation, if there was an ethical violation. I believe that should be our...
That's our duty.
If, if we shouldn't, if like, if we're not comfortably being in there, and the conversation is something that shouldn't be talked about, or for whatever reason that is, I think as a council member, we should be allowed to exit the meeting and not participate, rather than staying there, thinking about how much information I can get, and then go, you know, possibly damage the city or, or something as far as giving the information. That's how, that's my, my thinking as far as when we're communicating about how this would run. Just to be on the same page, let's, let's trust each other to have the conversation. If there's something that doesn't violate any of these rules and we want to talk about it, let's talk to each other and say, yes, this is something like, this isn't going to hurt anybody from the city, city attorney agrees, that would be great, and if there's something that's going wrong that's illegal, if there's something that's going on that, like, that, you know, that needs to be exposed, then go, go submit an ethics violation.
Well, our ethics ordinance does not cover...
I'm just saying, if something's wrong, go report it to somebody, I don't know.
And, and I would encourage anybody who, who feels like they've got questions or issues or concerns to work within the organization to try to get those resolved, and if you're not feeling like you're getting a resolution there, then, yeah.
And that would mean, starting with the city manager and the city attorney?
That, that might be the appropriate way to go, yeah, and then you can...
Not the world.
Well, it sounds like it would just be the city manager, and then giving permission for us to talk to you.
That's, again, I don't, I don't, that's not been an impediment at this point, people, I've not, there's not been an impediment with council having access to legal advice.
Okay, because that was going to be one of my questions, is can we just ask you directly, or do we have to?
That's, that's been happening, that's been happening, and that's been, not been an issue.
Sometimes it happens too much, because there is a charge, it's been contacted, it's not, not being experienced.
Oh, that's good to know.
Sometimes the manager can answer your question, or I can get the answer more quickly.
However, that does bring up ano, another good, related item, which is, a lot of cities have moved to hire the city manager and the city attorney. Right now, the way our charter is set up, we are only allowed to hire, fire, direct the city manager, which could put the city attorney in an interesting position. Why? Because the city manager is the one who hires and fires the city attorney. So as a council, if we're wanting advice or need direction contrary to what the city manager might believe, you have to understand, Paige, this has never happened with you, but you have to understand that the attorney doesn't work for us, the attorney works for the city manager.
The, the attorney works for the city, yeah.
But is hired and fired by the city manager.
And, and they still have...
But if you're charged, the manager works for you, so there are repercussions.
Okay.
So, and, and...
If I'm fired, I'm fired, Paige, and don't tell you, well, the next thing is to fire me and fire her back.
Or just say, that was a good decision, and move on, you know, that, that's, so we're getting off the, the topic.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that segue, forgive me.
So we need to get back onto this topic.
So can we add a provision to the executive session part that allows for us to do certified recordings of our executive session, instead of the certified, what is it, thank you, the certified agenda? It's recommended in the open records handbook.
I would, I'd recommend we have some discussion about that, about whether we do certified or, certified agenda versus a certified recording.
Uh, yeah, council members will be allowed to hear it, if there was ever any allegation, it can be pulled up by the courts, that sort of thing, and it's only for certain circumstances. Okay, E one, reconsideration of matters. A council member may request that an item be reconsidered, we talked about that earlier, but with the timeframe of six calendar days, doesn't that mean that an item can only be reconsidered before it's even fully implemented?
Yes, it has to be done by the next council member.
So what would be the process if, like, like when we implemented the agenda packet meetings? If we got three months down the road and decided it wasn't working, is that just a brand-new ordinance, we can't just repeal?
That's just a new agenda item, ask for that item to be on the agenda to, let's talk about this, let's check in, let's get a status on whether this is working.
Okay, and then...
Yeah, the, the reconsideration is, I had a regret, I was on the prevailing side, I regret my motion, and so I want it to be reconsidered, but you've got to do it by the next meeting.
You've got to have like instant regret.
We got a, instant regret, I mean, you can, if you have instant regret...
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, on D three, council request for information, anybody who's granted access to staff, if it's granted for one, it's granted for all, right? Like, sometimes, I'm going to pick on Mr. Watts, sometimes I stop by Mr. Watts's office because I'm walking around the building, and ask him to clarify various things for me, because, because engineering is not my jam. Like, anybody can do that, right? Any of us?
That's, you got to talk to your manager about that.
Okay.
You have to...
Does another question, council, I have some questions, staff, I'd like to know it, like Chris in example, he wants to talk to Robin about his own case, he emailed me, so I'd like to talk to Robin about this case. Good, thank you, and I email forward that directly to Robin.
Okay.
She knows that Chris is going to come see her, that's the way it works better for me.
It's, it's not a...
It's not going to stop you, sit, walk in by Wayne's office and say, hey Wayne, you know, whatever.
Okay.
It's not, not designed to do that.
And I would expect your manager would tell you at the beginning, these are kind of the ground rules for how I like to operate and implement that section, and I doubt that a manager is going to want to know about every single contact, they would just define what's the category.
Well, it's a waste of your time if we're bugging you about every little thing.
But I also believe there's a reason behind that, is you don't want a particular, any council member taking too much staff time.
Well, the, the other, it's that, and it's also to make it clear who, where the chain of command is, and it insulates the, the city manager has the pleasure of having seven bosses, and the city staff has one, so that it just avoids those types of issues.
Okay, and as for the limitation on four hours of work time, when people ask for open records, we don't limit the amount of time that it takes for us to, to pull their records, right? So that would actually be a limitation on us that's not on the public.
Which section are you talking about?
That would be D two, interaction with staff. If something was going to take more than four hours.
This just deals with agenda items.
Okay.
Staff reports. It's kind of like, I've, I've got a project, as a council member, I want, I want some information, I want to work on it, and it starts to become part of that staff member's job, that we, that needs to come either through the manager or through the council for, let's, this is going to take some time, so let's officially sanction it some way, it doesn't intend to deal with open records.
Awesome, and then my very last thing, and then I'll shut up. Can we add a provision, now that we all have city-issued cell phones, that all council members, if we're making phone calls or texts with each other, that it only be done through our city-issued phones, and not with our personal phones?
All city business with anybody, staff, council members, anyone, should only be limited to council phones.
I agree.
Do you want to include the city council email also?
Yeah, yeah.
All city business, that's...
We just use our, like, official communication accounts, and not like Facebook or personal phones or anything like that.
Yeah, I mean...
We didn't have phones when we were putting in suggestions, so... Yeah, they just got issued.
But if I'm asking council member Parker down there for, Pantaleen Parker, for style ideas, that can go on my personal...
Of course.
That's my fashion nine-one-one line.
Fashion nine-one-one.
Okay. I just want to say, Chris, thank you so much, this was, this took you many, many hours, and I appreciate it.
It's Chris and Dara, Dara.
And Dara.
Are you ready to take a vote? We've talked this thing to death, so, all in favor?
Wait, we've got, so, I want to just list the amendments. Do we have a, the amendments were adding closing statements, clarifying that requests to pull an item for discussion during regular agendas, gets that put on the regular agenda for discussion, and then conduct city business through city email accounts and city phones. Was that, were that all the items that council wanted to add in there?
I think so.
Yep.
Okay, and then there was one typo we need to fix.
She brought up two of them. One of them was yours, and two of them were hers.
On section E two, we need to make the, the deadline for motion for reconsideration match the deadline in E one.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve with those amendments. But our city secretary got down every bit of it.
A second? Or you want a second, Chris? No, no, I, I'll remove my six.
All right. We have a first and second. All in favor? All opposed? All right. Passes six to one. Thank you very much, Paige. Appreciate it.
I still want the clarification.
All right. So closing statements. Ms. Parker?
I'm glad it's before midnight because it's still today. Today is National Be Late for Something Day. So I tried to celebrate appropriately, uh, all day. Today in history, and forgive me, I've got this kind of jumbled up. I didn't get to organize this. But today in history, September fifth, eighteen thirty-six, Sam Houston is elected president of Texas. He was made the head of state of the Republic of Texas after colonists won their revolt against the Mexican government and created an independent and sovereign nation. Houston was responsible for the Texian victory against Mexican forces during the Battle of San Jacinto. Houston was elected president of the Republic of Texas twice and was also the only person to be governor of two different states, Texas and Tennessee. He was elected by five thousand one hundred and nineteen votes and was the, the first president of the Republic of Texas out of six thousand four hundred and forty-nine ballots cast. The vice president and successor to the president was Mirabeau Lamar. So that's your little history lesson today. And I was so afraid that Karen or Kat Thompson was, or Karen Thompson or Kat Howell were going to, going to take my closing statements and, and celebrate this moment by Sam Houston. One of the quotes I'd like to add is by Sam Houston, "Texas has yet to learn submission to any oppression come from what source it may." And as a member of the DRT, that's the Daughters of the Republic of Texas, and a descendant of a Pentalian that spied on Santa Anna and reported to Sam Houston, it is an honor to recognize this day. I would be a ninth-generation Texan had I been born in Texas. But my father decided to work for an oil company and we traveled, and I was not born in Texas. And that's, uh, my greatest regret. And I never let him live it down. Should have been born here. Side note, it's also Freddie Mercury's birthday. That's all I have.
Well, I'm sitting next to.
Long live the queen.
I'm touching you. Somebody spied on Santa Ana? Okay, that's good. Well, um, today in history, many, many years ago, um, my husband was born. So happy birthday, Greg. Yay. And also, I just have something to say. Let me see, where's the camera? Is it that one? Anyway. Hey, Josh. I hope you're still watching. Okay, good night, everybody.
Okay, I never talk, I'm talking. The American Legion. The American Legion was chartered by Congress in nineteen nineteen as a patriotic veterans' organization, focusing on service to veterans, service members, and communities. The Legion evolved from a group of war-weary veterans of War One into one of the most influential nonprofit groups in the United States. Let's see, they are, over the years, the Legion has influenced considerable social change in America, won hundreds of benefits for veterans, produced many important programs for children and youth. They're having their hundred-year gala, let me bring this up. Their centennial gala, celebrating one hundred years of the American Legion. And they're going to honor a Medal of Honor recipient, Herschel Woodrow Woody Williams. If you'd like information on this event, you can contact me at my, um, city contact information, and, uh, I'll get it to you. But I just want to lift up, um, the Legion and the VFW. These guys and, and women are out there serving the community. They're not asking to have their names put on plaques. They're not asking for recognition. They are in the trenches out there in the cities. And they don't just serve veterans, they serve the entire community. And I just, uh, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm a member of both of them. But those guys, I'm not doing what those guys are doing. Those guys are actually going out there and, and making things happen in our city. So, um, I really appreciate them. I hope they're watching and go to the gala.
Great. I just want to remind everyone that the first Tuesday in October, so, um, October first, is our national night out. And you can go to Leander TX.gov slash police and, and find all the links and all the information. Or you can call Sergeant Helen Garrett at five one two, five two eight, two eight one two. And then I'd also like to remind everyone that football's in season. So tomorrow night, we got a game at Bible Stadium. Pay attention when you're on Baghdad. And go attend a game if you can. Thanks.
Well, thank you for coming out. And I just wanted to say, this is a really cool time to be a part of our city. And I just wanted to, uh, thank everybody for the opportunity to be up here. Also, I just, another part, really cool about, about this city right now is Evan and everybody that was, that had anything to do with putting this economic profile together. I just think this is a really cool piece to be able to just showcase what we're doing in this town and where we're going. And so I just love that that's the spirit about us right now. So thank you to everybody who put this thing together. And thanks, everybody, for the positive vibes that we got going on right now and moving this, this, uh, city of Leander forward. Thank you.
Um, I just want to thank everybody for sticking it out tonight. We're getting out a little earlier than, than we have lately. So yay, I will keep this fairly short. When I worked in youth services at the library, I began a program there called Stress Free Saturday. And it was focused on teenagers. And the point was to get them offline where there's all this bullying, have them put their phone into a basket when they walked in the room, and we would do art therapy. Suicide in the U.S. has become a huge epidemic, especially in the ten-to-fourteen-year-old age range where it's skyrocketing. And we lose about a hundred and twenty-nine people a day to suicide. And let's not let that become an epidemic here in Leander. So I am asking people to come out to this event that I'm going to go to, put on by one of our residents. It is called Live for Tomorrow. It's going to be Tuesday, September tenth, at Bloodsow Park. It's a free event. There will be some fundraising there, um, with some barbecue sandwiches and whatnot. It's going to benefit Baghdad PTA. And we use the semicolon in it because the semicolon is used when writers are not finishing a sentence. Your story is not finished. So come out and just support each other. Thanks.
And I wanted to, uh, thank a couple of citizens for doing something extraordinary. We have a restaurant right across the street that's opening that we're all super excited about. And Tisa Stevenson and, uh, Deanna Ramirez gave up their time to clean up the place for Andrea to, to go out and get shrubs and plant. And it looks fantastic, and we're excited about it opening. It's the first restaurant we have back, full restaurant, in Old Town, which is awesome, which is what we're trying to do. So very excited about it and very excited about what they did, which was very selfless, giving their time. So I think it's a great example of, uh, community getting involved. So I appreciate it. So with that, we will adjourn. The time is ten forty. Thank you very much.